Sounds different. Welcome to the city council meeting. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Henderson, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, again we thank you for the blessings that you give to us. We thank you for your love and for your grace in our lives. We thank you for all the resources that you've entrusted to us. We thank you for this beautiful city, a beautiful river that runs through it. Thank you for the countryside, the parks and the neighborhoods, all these blessings that you've entrusted into our care. I pray that you would help us to be good stewards of this earth and its resources, and our little corner of it right here. Lord, help us also to be good stewards of the other resources entrusted to us by the taxpayers. Lord, help us to deal well with the finances of this city. Help us to use wisdom. Lord, we pray that you would give us that wisdom and professionalism and civility. May we have respect for one another and great cooperation. Lord, give us a love for the truth and for honesty. May we deal fairly and justly with one another. Protect us from selfish ambition and pride. Lord, strengthen our city, strengthen our morals and our uprightness. Make our community strong, Father. And we pray that we would lead the way tonight in this meeting. We pray that it would be profitable, and these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. First item on the agenda, or next item on the agenda is approval of city council meeting minutes dated March 29, 2018. Can I motion a second to approve those minutes?
So move.
Here, motion a second. Any comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for that this evening, which brings us to the next item, which is a presentation by Moose Lodge 145, by Mr. Levinson and Mr. Dunkelberger. If you would so kindly, please come to the front and introduce yourselves.
This is Harris Levinson. We're from the Williamsport Family Center 145. We have these Tommy Moose dolls to give to the fire department and the police department to hand out to children in a time of need, so they can put them in the plastic bags, carry them around in the cars or the cruisers, and when kids are traumatized in an accident, they can give them to them.
Thank you very much on behalf of the kids of Williamsport, in particular, but also on behalf of city government for your service and the offer of Tommy the Moose. The Moose's, Meese, Moose's. And I'm sure that that will help children when they have a circumstance and a time of need, so thanks again. Seems a shame to put a moose in a plastic bag, though. Keep them clean for the kids. Very nice gesture there. Next item on the agenda is presentation by Stahl Schaefer related to the Brandon Park rehabilitation project. Ms. Navina, how are you this evening?
Good evening, Dr. Williamson, members of council. I have here this evening Robin from Stahl Schaefer Engineering, and she's just going to walk us through the Brandon Park rehabilitation conceptual plans and the budget that we would like to submit to DCNR for final approval.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Jesse. Good evening, everyone. As Jesse said, my name is Robin Frelick from Stahl Schaefer Engineering. We have been hired on as the site and civil consultant for the Brandon Park improvements. I have with me Brian Amon. He is landscape architect that is teaming with us to bring the expertise for the nature play and some of the landscape portions of the park. Jesse asked us to provide just a five to seven-minute overview of the concept plan that we have. I believe that's in your packet, so I can just walk you through that. Just a brief history, we are following the master plan that was brought forth and completed by Larson last year sometime, I believe, and for the most part, we are following the layout of which they had concluded to in the master plan. A few rearrangements of locations of some of the concepts of the park, but overall, a match to what was proposed originally. If you turn to C-101 in the packet, we'll focus mostly on that, and then I'll introduce and bring Brian up to talk a little bit about the nature play. But C-101 is the overview of the park, of the improvements, and I'll just start on the top-left corner on the northwest side and walk through and just briefly give you an overview of the different components that are proposed for improvements. So on the top side, the northwest side, there is a sidewalk connection that's proposed for Parkwood and Packer. There will be ADA access for future connections for pedestrians and ADA incorporation for other improvements in the future along that corridor. There will be a proposed concrete sidewalk, five-foot sidewalks throughout the park that are improved, that will connect down to the existing sidewalks. Off to the left is the nature play area, which we'll get into a little bit more, but essentially a play space that is based on natural components instead of traditional playground equipment. So we'll get into that in a little bit more detail as Brian comes up and gives some overview of that. On the right side, as you follow the sidewalk down, there is a bio-retention area, shown by the blue space. It's a, proposed to be a passive planting area, so it has some landscaping in there, some grading to address some of the low spots and wet areas of the park there, but not any part of an active component for interpretation or inviting people to walk through, but more just an improvement to the park with some landscaping. The existing parking lot will be improved and extended. We'll be proposing a total of 31 spaces, which I believe is around 12 additional spaces that will be added to the lot, so that will be an extension, and then a mill and overlay to the lot itself to improve the existing surface and repair some of the cracks and curbs that are, have some issues with cracking over the years. So we'll have the extension there, we'll have a sidewalk connection over to the former pool house, which will allow for pedestrian and camp use and access over to that space. And then we will, if you move south past the parking area down to the southern area, there's a proposed second bio-retention area for stormwater management to address MS4 component requirements for the municipal separate stormwater system. And that one is going to be a little bit more active and can be interpreted, introducing some landscaping there and to also address another wet area of the park that's difficult to mow and maintain throughout the summer months. And so we'll have some walkways there and one walkway that'll connect from the pool house area where the camps are using the space over there down to the band show. And then the last component is down on the bottom, you'll see the tennis courts. We're proposing to leave the asphalt in place, but do some crack repair and repairs to the existing surface to eliminate low spots, put a surface on it so it'll have the colored tennis court surface, and then we will also be doing some improvements to the lighting there. So we'll be replacing those fixtures with LED fixtures that'll have cutoff luminaires that will be an improvement to being good neighbors to the people that live adjacent to the tennis court. So they'll be directed more downwards, and they'll also have a timer on them, so they can be controlled by the city to control when those can actually be utilized, and then also with a push-button timer that can be used for just one hour at a time, so they won't be turned on and left for hours during the evening hours. So I think that covers the full components of one end to the other of the improvements, and I can bring Brian up to talk a little bit about the nature play space and some of the other landscaping components of the design.
This is the plan sheet that shows the nature play area in a little more detail. The location was selected for this area in that it's off the new walkway that provides an important pedestrian connection into the heart of the park, but it's also in proximity to the existing playground equipment that's already there. So if a parent is there observing their children, they can see both the nature play area and then the other more traditional playground areas that you already have in the park. So nature play is a little bit of a different take on recreation play for children. As Robin mentioned, and I'm working with Elizabeth Marcello from the city here on the design of the park, it relies on natural materials. I think it's interesting that when we finally get kids to disconnect from their computers and their screens, we take them out to the park and then they play on a rubberized surface on steel and plastic playground equipment. So this is a different take on that, and I think it helps diversify the recreational offerings of the park in that we're creating a nice and natural space for children to play in. All the materials are natural, there'll be seating for the, you know, the parents on benches, but then we have, you know, logs and natural materials, stone, rocks, and bark mulch as a safety surface, and then they're immersed in a landscaping of native trees, shrubs, grasses, and wildflowers. So it'll be a really natural element of the park. In addition, there's some, you know, edible landscaping possibilities associated with this, as well as the MS4 components, that we're trying to solve drainage issues in the park while creating habitat, improving water quality, improving water quantity. So we're trying to create some natural habitats in what is now a very traditional park space and be inviting to a different range of recreational users. With that, we can answer any questions you might have on that.
I'll open it up here in a second, but I had a couple of quick ones. First, a comment. The company is new to me, but in particular, Brian Amon is not, and I've been an admirer of his work in thinking about space, I think for now about a dozen years. And you may remember his involvement in some of the rethinking of city parks in terms of how to utilize those spaces, going back for a long time, and he's put his positive imprint on many aspects of our community, not just in Williamsport, over the years. So just wanted to say that. The questions I had, a couple of, one of them in, one, the one question I know that I have is to ask about maintenance. How does this change essentially the maintenance requirements or maintenance costs of these particular areas going forward? And of course, the council thinks about that from a budgetary standpoint, equipment needing to put in, you know, replace vegetation or whatever, annuals versus perennials, but also man-hours, right? So I have a feeling I know you're going to say that it reduces maintenance costs, but I don't know for sure, so I thought I'd ask.
Well, I think that the different areas, some you're setting a different expectations for the maintenance, like a no-mow area in these traditionally wet areas that you can't get a piece of mowing equipment in there for a month after mowing. So the idea of creating a different expectation in those areas, and it is a different type of, you know, landscape maintenance for the natives and the natural landscaping. So what I'm hoping through this process is that, you know, we, there's a training process, educational process with the maintenance crew, but also that we help mobilize volunteers for something like this, that, you know, we start growing some grassroots support for a different kind of landscape here, so.
And it sounds like by having natural lands, much of it being natural landscaping, you know, we're not going to be needing to very precisely trim hedges and that sort of thing, which, you know, can eat up a lot of man-hours.
Right.
As well. Things can grow more naturally.
Right.
There'll be clearly maintenance needed, but maybe not as often or not as intensively.
Yeah, and again, solving the problems, when we look at the drainage issues, we can demonstrate MS4 requirements here, but we can also help, you know, create positive drainage where there doesn't occur now. So I think there's some nice opportunities on this.
And the other component of what I was going to comment on, and maybe there'll be a question somewhere in here, but if I've listened well, we have improved recreational opportunities out of this project. We have improved maintenance in a variety of ways, but including a tennis court configuration that needs quite a bit of maintenance anyway, even if we weren't doing new things. We're improving, as you said, water quality and water quantity issues that is something that we're mandated to do, and this is a good opportunity to do that. And we're enhancing quality of life in arguably our most beloved park in the city. So while the dollar figure seems significant, it's partially funded, largely funded from state grant sources, so it's money coming into the city, and it's having, it's not just doing one thing, it's doing, meeting many needs and wants for our community and making our community a better place to live and play as well. I think I hit all of those benefits if I heard, if I was listening well.
I would just add pollinator habitat and things like that.
Oh, okay, yep, I missed that one. So thank you for the explanation. Are there other questions and comments? Mrs. Katz.
This came to Public Works, and one of the things that we did discuss was the funding for this project. One of the things that I, for the public to understand, that a lot of what the public survey was done, I think a year or two ago, was incorporated into this plan, and so the public will understand that this is, their time was put to good use. The other, the other thing is, the, what you are doing, we can also attain, and Rebecca, I think you can, if I can ask you this, this will also give us more credits toward our MS4 projects, which is another good thing. So we need all of these things, these components to come together. So the presentation was really well-done, and I think everybody's going to be excited for when this does start coming to fruition. The other thing, with the grant money, because of the survey, I did want to clarify too, the survey was used to get the funding for this, so, just to make that clear.
Great, thank you. Other comments, other questions? Ms. Mealy?
I just, that I also think this is impressive, and I'm excited to see this project move forward. I certainly hope we manage to sort out, I think we're winding up slightly over budget on what we initially anticipated, is my understanding, but I would imagine that we can sort that out, because it seems like we're getting a fair amount of bang for our buck, especially Brandon Park has been, has long been a traditional park, and it's a beautiful park, and we have beautiful trees, but we're keeping the, what I would consider assets in the park and losing some of the detrimental elements, the soggy areas and that we've probably all stumbled through at some point. And I think the nature play will be just a huge asset to a city that finds itself, among other things, in the middle of Pennsylvania wild, so it'll be a nice sort of connection to, you know, when our kids get out and get out of the city and get into the forest, so. It looks great, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anything else?
It looks like it can be developed more within the project, there's things that can be added as well, is that correct?
Yeah, you know, there were some discussions about, you know, what is nature play? You know, we really started from the beginning, and, you know, there was some thoughts that, you know, more traditional play equipment would be part of it. So if you look at the area, there's an open play space in the center of the design, and that's appropriately sized to accommodate a play structure in the future if, you know, if that's needed. I think there's some, you know, I think it can be more of an organic process. If we build and people love it the way it is, you know, it can stay that way, but there's alternatives for different build-out scenarios in the future if you did want to add a, kind of a signature-focused play piece in the middle of that area.
How about around the periphery if it needed expanded?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's very expandable, given that location, and it's, you know, almost contiguous with the existing play area, so.
Of course, when I was a kid, it was before all the electronics and the gadgets and everything, and we made our own nature play areas, you know, that's what we went out and did during the day, so it's really.
Building forts out of.
Yeah, it's really a great idea to, that we introduce that, reintroduce it to another generation.
Mr. Slaughter.
I'm not familiar with the edible. I was just wondering how, you know, how does that, how's the edible scenery work?
Well, you know.
Or how do we ensure, speaking of maintenance, how would we ensure that the kids are eating the correct?
Yeah, I think that can be in a specific area, that, you know, the things that are there are safe, and we kind of, again, celebrate the native edible plants that we have here. So that, part of this is an educational signage element, and so I think there's opportunities to show it and what it is, and a chance for people to learn. You know, a lot of kids today don't know where a carrot comes, let alone where, you know, blueberries come from, so, you know.
Yeah, I just imagine a kid walking through, you know, if it's weeds, and they're like, oh, this is the edible area, and they're eating. Anyway, thank you, I was just wondering.
Any others, Ms. Mealy?
Actually, I think Derek, you'd be shocked at the vast number of things you can't eat, even the weeds in your garden. That said, I guess that does point out, you talked, Brian, about training, training city employees in terms of different kinds of maintenance that will be required with this versus what we're used to doing in the park. The one thing, will there be some sort of a handbook or a guidebook, something that, because obviously, training's only worth so much when we get a new set of employees, and so there needs to be something that we can sort of pass down, you know, or a certain, something conceptual, will that be a part of the training process?
I hadn't thought of it to date, but I think that's a really good idea, to think of zones and zones and landscape maintenance requirements, so that's something that, you know.
I'm just, you know, it's easy enough, I think, the thought process on pruning and maintenance changes, so that we're kind of constantly trying to keep up with that anyway, but then, especially if we have a whole new host of plants that need to be maintained in a slightly different fashion, it would be wise to have it in writing, I think, for us, so that'd be good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Navina, while we have you focused, let's go ahead and run through your agenda items. So the next item on the agenda will be resolution for the execution of agreements for the use of Bowman Field. Sorry, Mrs. Frank, for the lack of warning on that one.
That's okay, I have them numbered this time.
All right.
Okay.
A resolution authorizing the execution of agreements for the use of Bowman Field, Williamsport Area High School, Williamsport Lions Club, Hughesville High School, Williamsport Crosscutters, Pennsylvania College of Technologies, St. John Newman's Regional Academy, Alzheimer's Association, Montgomery Area High School.
Thank you. Can I motion a second to approve this resolution?
So move.
Here, motion a second. How are you this evening again?
Doing well, thank you. So in your packet, please find the resolution. We have worked diligently with the Crosscutters, as well as Major League Baseball, to make this season possible and to accommodate as many requests as possible. So while protecting our investment at the field, we have worked with the facility groundskeeper, Isaiah, and we are planning to have all the games requested played by May 19.
Thank you, and was this reviewed by committee?
Yes.
Yeah, by Public Works. Mrs. Katz.
Public Works, this is, this came to Public Works, and we did pass this with a positive recommendation. Are we, I guess we can also discuss when the MLB game is, can we, at this point? Or should we just not discuss that yet? Because that's part of Bowman Field. But anyhow, Jess is also going to be doing a street truck fair June 16.
Correct.
Which, that was another part that we kind of discussed. But most of what's going on here that we discussed at Public Works is more or less normal. There's been just a couple of things added on. They tried as much as they could to get as many of these high school and other pan-college and everything, everyone to be able to use the field. There were a couple, I guess, that weren't able to squeeze in the time because they wanted too many days in a row, which is very bad on the field, but on a whole, this was, like I said, this was passed with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions, members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing the renewal of the Lifeline Skate Park lease. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution authorizing the renewal of Lifeline Skate Park lease between the City of Williamsport and Lifeline Skate Park Incorporated, whereas on July 7, 2016, by resolution 8569, council approved a lease agreement with Lifeline Skate Park, and whereas the approved lease permits the renewal of the lease agreement for the term of one year with the approval of city council. Be hereby resolved that the city council of the City of Williamsport authorizes the renewal of the attached lease agreement between the City of Williamsport and Lifeline Skate Park for the continued use of the premises known as Lifeline Skate Park at Memorial Park.
Thank you. Can I motion a second?
So move.
Here, motion a second.
So before you this evening, we have a resolution to continue the Lifeline Skate Park lease. It is simply a one-year continuation of what is already in place, and I'm going to defer to Sally and Lonnie to make some additional comments.
Thank you. Welcome. How are you this evening?
Thank you. Very good.
Excellent, good to see you both.
I looked at a picture on my refrigerator tonight before I came over here, of the groundbreaking for the skate park, which had Lonnie and me and the mayor there, and I realized that was 2011. It's kind of hard to believe, that much time has gone by, and I don't have any real exact statistics for you on how many people use the park, because we don't have any way to count, but every time I drive by there, if it's not early in the morning or it's not inclement weather, there are people using the park. I feel like it's very, very well-used, and people who walk on the Riverwalk tell me the same thing, that they see a lot of people out using the skate park. Another one of our goals was to have fewer people skateboarding downtown, and I think that also has been accomplished. I know that my parking lot of my office at William Street has very few skateboarders now, not none, but fewer than we used to have, and I know it's not because skateboarding is any less popular, because it's actually getting more and more popular. So from our side, as the local volunteers and the skateboard board of directors, we are super happy with the partnership that we've had these years with the city, and we really hope it can continue. And I'll turn this over to Lonnie to tell you about, a little bit about what our hopes are for future.
What you're seeing here in front of you is actually, if you go to page two first, you know, we've had some issues with drainage on our road there, but that's leading into our efforts for hopeful expansion this year and the next years. So back to the first page, because of that drainage problem and accessibility and if we, you know, the fact that sometimes if we have a severe rainstorm, we get a huge puddle in front of the park, and it ends up going into the park, so it's been sort of a drainage issue for a while, but, you know, it's sort of our dream to, the possibility in the future to get those roads paved down in there, and then be able, what you're seeing on the front is a sidewalk that runs along that paved road, making it, simulating more of a street area, you know, and simulating more of our downtown in the spaces surrounding the park. But, of course, this is just our dream, you know, we're happy that we've even got the first part completed with everybody's help, but we wanted to at least let you guys know what our plans are for the future, and an idea of what the surrounding space and, you know, the part of the park that we're actually going to use, what you see there is. what our plans are for the future and an idea of what the surrounding space and, you know, the part of the park that we're actually going to use. What you see there is, you know, we don't have any plans for expansion past that, but that's, still should be plenty for us. But we've got a bunch of mulch up there this week that we're taking care of over the next few days. We're trying to comply with codes, issues with, you know, inspection stuff that we need to comply with the city, but we're working on that this week. Should have all that stuff planned, so we'd like to think that we're holding up our end of the bargain, but if...
Did she explain that in the picture?
Yeah, about the puddle, yeah. But we have some plans to hold a few fundraisers this year, to try to start fundraising again, and hoping to make them like more of a community-based thing, to get the entire city to break out their bicycles for a day and have a ride around town, or, you know, and everybody contribute a couple bucks to the, to the cause, but it's just going to require some permits and some things around, you know, the downtown to, you know, incite some enthusiasm for the event, but a few things like that. We hope to continue to make it a good place for kids to go, and, I don't know, hope that we can see it last for another 20 years or more, but...
All right.
You guys have any questions for us?
Thank you. Let me turn it over to Mrs. Katz for the review at Public Works.
This went to Public Works, and we didn't pass this with a positive recommendation, only because I was questioning the lease. But first of all, I want to say Lonnie and I go back, way back, when Lonnie was a teenager, even younger than a teenager, with his skateboarding, and he used to go to Philadelphia to film and everything else. I mean, Lonnie has been an incredible skateboarder for umpteen years, and I know he doesn't even want to discuss age, either do I. This is, you know, and Sally has put so much into the skate park, and you're right, Sally, what this has done is it's taken some of the kids off the streets, which is so dangerous at times, because they're so into what they're doing, they're not paying attention to traffic, and they're assuming all cars are going to watch out for them, and it's, you know, it can be dangerous. When I questioned about the lease, I only questioned about the lease only from the standpoint of, there might be another entity assigning a lease with Elm Park. What I did is I questioned Adam, and Adam had some really good ideas with this, with the lease, and, well, let's, let's go back to something else. Joe Pavlock said to me, when I talked to him, that this is just a renewal of the lease, and it's extending the term of this lease, okay, which I understand completely. I just didn't want anybody to get caught up in something else. And I talked to Norm about this a little bit, and I, you know, we didn't know what to, as far as where to go with this, but Adam Wender had a really good idea to put in the lease itself, the boundaries, your boundaries, that nobody else could come into your boundaries. And this is, you know, what we thought, and I would like Adam to discuss that, if that's at all possible. Is that okay?
Absolutely, please do.
Because it was Adam's idea.
Sure.
Basically, we took what's considered Elm Park and broke it into a few different pieces. There's a center road that from, goes from Forest Street south all the way to basically the brush piled streets and parks. So we're using that as the main boundary, and you would go from that east to the property line that merges with the school district, I think Keith Ex' property merges in there. They all come together at the east city boundary. And then from that stone road to, this is going to sound weird, but there's a telephone pole just west of Liflin Skate Park, and a relief well that's in line with original Little League's chain link fence. That's kind of the boundary we use with Little League to say that, hey, mow that area, we mow everything east of that. So it would give you three portions on that side of the road at the, what's really considered Max Brown Memorial Park area on the deed. So the thought was just to, like I said, use that stone road. That would be one lease for Liflin Skate Park, one lease for whoever moves forward with Elm Park, and it wouldn't affect original Little League at all.
Can I ask a question specifically about this, taking it back? Would it, clearly, the, if there's another entity leasing the remainder of the complex, we'd need boundary language in that lease, as well as this lease. But I'm not, and, and the boundary you just described is probably what it will end up being, but until we're closer to completing that discussion, you know, if we're a foot wrong one way or the other here and there, it's going to need revision and, and going through the process again. Might this be a solution to say, move forward on this lease as it's written now, and then come back on a mutually agreed to amendment at the same time the lease to the broader Elm Park comes through, with the idea, you know, basically, we're going to say, what you just described, more or less, is going to be what the amendment will be, but actually working out the details of the language, rather than trying to do it here on the fly?
Yes.
Might be the simpler, more streamlined solution?
We just didn't, I know, I didn't want them to get caught into something with another lease.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, even though, and this is where my, because we want this skate park, and I know everybody else wants this skate park. I mean, they've done an awful lot of good things with this. I, you know, when it comes to a lease and signatures on leases, you just, you know, you want to make sure every i is dotted and every t is crossed.
Right, no, absolutely, and I think, I think all the entities on all sides of all the leases agree that this is not to be subsumed within anything else that happens to Elm Park, and so I'd ask that the solicitor, hearing this discussion, help work out the language as part of the other negotiation, what the boundaries would be included in that lease, and then at the same time, make sure the language matches up, and we can come back and do a quick amendment, and the lease outlines how changes would be made. I'm sure you'd sign off, we'd sign off, and it'd be a quick, you know, five-minute discussion when that time comes.
The other lease would have, or should have in it, definitive boundaries.
Right, and then we can just add...
Because it's a larger area.
Add these definitive boundaries as an amendment at the same time we pass that one, just have them...
Yeah, that one, amend this, you know, we could amend this resolution at that time, but also to make sure that when we do the other lease, that this area is specifically excluded.
Exactly. And that way, it doesn't hold us up, because I know we have a lease that is expiring on the 20th, go ahead and move forward now, but all of us have that in the back of our mind, it'll come forward when, when the timing is right.
Okay.
Back to you, Mrs. Katz.
Yes, that's, that's, you know, we just wanted to clarify things here, okay? And that's all there was to it. No, it's, we wanted something, and we just wanted to have, well, Don and I wanted to have a discussion with this, with council.
Yeah, no, I think it's useful.
We didn't want to make the final say here, at the committee level.
Sure.
We wanted a conversation with council.
No, it's a good idea. And you, and you indicated, came forward with no recommendation, but explain why.
Right, no recommendation.
Okay, other comments or questions, members of council? Ms. Mealy?
Just that perhaps we have two of the leaders of the skate park board here, perhaps we should get their acknowledgement on the record, that they're cognizant that we will be adding boundaries to the lease at some point in the future.
I'm sorry, I forgot that nods don't get on the record.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with that approach?
Absolutely, that's just exactly what we'd like to see happen, yes.
Great, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? I have a question and then a suggestion. The question is, I remember the original design of what we'll call Phase Two, and sorry, I don't remember, the obstacle flat part, what's that called?
The, the, the idea that a future expansion that would have... Street, street areas.
There we go, I knew there was a name for it.
More street stuff and not so much ramp stuff.
And that the street section originally was designed to be kind of on the western side of the current, am I now seeing that's going to be the southeast?
Yeah, like from the levee to the, you know, the one, the south side of that building is there.
Okay, that way you can have parking to the west.
Actually, the boundary never changed from the beginning, except that, you know, like I said, if we were to add a street, we might be able to go forward out to that street at some point.
Yep, okay, so that was my question, and so the street area now is here?
Parts, well, in both parts. It will be in both areas.
Okay.
They will all be sort of linked together, like, you know, you'd be able to turn a street corner and head back towards the back end of the park as well, you know.
Oh, okay, I see. At first I was thinking some of that other was just pure sidewalk, but it is skateable.
Well, there was, there's an area like between what's there now and that building of Textron's that, you know, it's just like almost a bunch of wasted space right there, and if we actually put, poured concrete, like a big plaza sidewalk area through there, and actually made it accessible with Textron's trucks, we could actually maximize as much of that space as possible.
Okay. Here's my suggestion, outside the skating area, obviously, I've just revealed I have no idea what I'm talking about there, so I won't comment. But in terms of the paving the street and parking area idea, let me challenge you and to the degree this dream moves forward and you're working with city, on what to do about that, challenge us all to think about making that a permeable driving and parking area, because, one, you know, that will help with the drainage side of things, two, we have to because of MS4 kinds of provisions, if, and maybe we could even get some credits out of, of those requirements. But I think there's also, there are creative products that you can put in there that would help deal with the drainage, would help deal with being access for vehicular access, but that are a little bit more gentle on, you know, it's not just paving over more stuff.
Yeah.
Since we're just talking about temporary driving through and dropping off kids or parking over there so you can use the park, there's some cool stuff that you can drive on that lets the rain go through.
Dual purpose, in a sense.
Dual purpose, yeah. And it might be a good place to try that out, with a lower environmental impact, and maybe we get some bonus points with the federal government or something out of it, too.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, that, yeah, what I, I was actually gonna, was just thinking that, and there might also, potentially, we might be able to secure some sort of grant funding if we were doing like a trial area in the city. It's a long shot, but one never knows, you know, things like stormwater management are sexy right now, and it would be, it would be a good, a good thing if we could figure out a way to, not to pave the world, and probably would also appeal to funding agencies for parks. Okay.
Any other comments? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlatter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. While we have, Ms. Navi up there, we'll go ahead and go to the resolution authorizing the statement of work and master services agreement. Mrs. Frank, please.
A resolution authorizing the statement of work and master services agreement between the City of Williamsport and Civic Plus for the purchase of recreation software. Keep going.
No, that's fine, thank you, I just lost track of what was happening there. Can I have a motion and a second on the resolution?
Move. Second.
Here, a motion and a second. Go ahead.
Okay, so the final item you will find in your packets is a resolution to purchase recreation software from Civic Rec Plus out of Manhattan, Kansas. So Civic Rec has provided not only the most cost-effective option, but the best product for the city's intended use. With the software, the city's recreation department will now be able to accept credit cards, we will be able to take summer camp registrations online, members of the community will be able to purchase pool passes, we can schedule field usages online, people can reserve pavilions, vendors for events can register and pay online, we can sell special event tickets, there will be a master calendar of events, field usages, pavilion rentals, and it can be public-facing, depending how we feel about that. There will be park usage forms that you can also fill out online, and there are promotional opportunities through email blasts and connections with social media sites. So funding for the software was budgeted in line item 2220-64010, and there are some additional funds that we are required for this purchase, but I was able to find some savings through using AmeriCorps for summer full-time employment.
Thank you, and I believe this went to Finance, so Ms. Mealy, please.
What Finance absolutely loves to hear is that we will be funding something fully out of one department, even if we hadn't initially budgeted quite enough money in the line item. So, yeah, this, this came to the Finance Committee, we did forward it with positive recommendation to the full body of council. The, the software looks very promising, and while it can't do exactly everything we'd hoped, neither could, the summer employment scheduling, which is the only module that doesn't exist in the software, didn't exist in any of the software that was reviewed by sort of our team, that is to say, our IT director over there behind the camera. Chris, you want to nod the camera there, so everybody knows? And Jesse. And this company is potentially working on adding an employment module, a scheduling module to the software. It actually, it, it looks like it will work out exceptionally well for the recreation department, and one quick note that our renewal, as the wording in the contract initially stated, we could have been looking at an increase over the $4,500 in year number three. The $4,500 was fixed for year two, but there was no fixed amount for year three and moving forward. But Chris got them to add a clause into the contract that unless we're doing more than $400,000 worth of business, so to speak, revenue streams in this, in the software, the fee will stay at $4,500. And we agreed that if we were doing over $400,000 in transactions through the recreation department, that probably we could pay more than $4,500 bucks for the privilege. That said, yeah, this, this looks very exciting. All I would like to see is perhaps other departments within the city that also do a lot of transactions move into a situation like this, where people can, can fill out forms online, can submit forms online. It makes, it not only makes our recreation director's time and her staff's time go much further, but it makes things so much simpler for anybody out in the community who wants a pool pass and doesn't necessarily want to get to City Hall to buy one, you know. So, all, all around, this is an excellent concept, and I hope it works well for us here and then we expand it elsewhere in the city.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Just to echo that, you know, it's about time that we keep up with the times move up to where we are today. I, I think it's entirely feasible to think that our revenue will increase as well with, with ease of access. There's plenty of studies that point to that fact, and so I think this is going to be a great addition, well-needed, and so I'm excited to support this as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Allison?
I agree with everything that's been said already, because it is important that we do this citywide with everything, and I just wanted to segue from that into, since we're talking IT and doing things online, about the new website, new city website is up, I just want to make the point that that's not the finished product, it's still a work in process, it's, it's going to, a lot of things are going to improve, but it seemed necessary to, to make the shift sooner rather than later, because the previous one, you couldn't use it from anything mobile, it was really, really limited. So that problem's been solved, and it's going to accommodate everything that Ms. Navintry wants to do in recreation, as well as anything else we want to do, so that's a big part of this as well, but I just, there's been some comments that people thought it would be more than it is. Well, it's going to be more than what's there right now, and behind the scenes, our IT department and others are working hard on that, so I just want to get that part, because that's a big part of the equation.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Schlatter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
While we're down here at the bottom of the agenda, Mr. Girardi, shall we move on to demolition? How are you this evening?
Good, yourself, sir?
Good.
Good evening, President Williamson, members of council. What you have before you is a request for demolition at the property located at 333 East Third Street for K.C.L. and Brady E. Stopper. This property is located in the central business district, the structure that he wants now, before I go any further, you have two pictures. One shows a... One shows a, I call an aerial view of the building, and the other one is, shows the actual building. The building that he's talking about tearing down is the yellow portion, okay, which was an add-on years later. He's looking just to tear down that portion, which is approximately fifty by a hundred and twenty feet. It's been vacant for years. The owner intends to construct a parking lot with that, to open it up for the storefront that he's going to expose, okay? He will be coming back through for a certificate of appropriateness for the look of that building, okay? What he's trying to do is provide a open space in front of East Third Street, parking in front of the building so people can get in and get out of his building easier, okay? Presently, right now, if he were to rent that space house, he has, he doesn't have the parking out front. He doesn't really have any parking on the lot, other than where Wes Friedman is, which is, there's electrical company, Friedman Electric, not Wes Friedman, I'm sorry. And if you'd like, we have a representative here, or if you have questions of me.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the demolition?
Some move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Just to make sure I understand, well, first, is, in yellow building, you mean the one that faces Third Street, right?
That's correct.
And so that's the one that would come down, the one that has seen improvement that faces Penn Street.
Right.
Will remain an all behind it.
That's correct, cause he came back several years back for a certificate of appropriateness for the front canopy and the brick piers, if you remember correctly.
And, and all of that is one parcel, then?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, is also the owner of the, the empty lot, which is the car lot across the street?
Right.
And that doesn't provide adequate parking, I suppose, for?
I'm not saying it does or doesn't, I don't think Mr. Stoppers intends to do anything with that property other than to develop it separately from this particular property.
And you're saying it separately, not that there are any specific plans for development?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. And, and looking at the aerial shot, then, all of the building that's, that has the numbers on it, the lighter gray on mine.
That's correct, will be there.
Is staying, and the darker gray, just the frontage, is what's going. Does that already have a curb cut off of Third Street?
Yes, Mr. Nar, myself met with Mr. Stopper, did walk the facility, does have access, he does have a permanent access off of Third, he wouldn't need a hop, which is a highway occupancy permit.
He would not?
No, he would not, he has an existing access entrance there presently right now. You can park cars there, parallel with the road, if you actually wanted to come in and park, you could do that.
Okay. That was, I mean, obviously, he would be the one who would want to know that before I would, but clearly that would change everything if his occup, highway occupancy permit, given that's a state road, right?
That's correct.
All right, thank you very much. Other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy.
Just a question about how this is, if, and how this is in keeping with our downtown design ordinance. I know that we have, you'll, excuse me, it's just been a couple of years since we've really looked at it or talked about it. This is including a substantial setback, setback from Third Street at this point. And I thought that part of the requirements were that buildings were supposed to be sort of in line with other buildings in the area, correct?
Correct. There's only one other building, I know it's in that area, if I'm correct, it's the Eagles Lodge, which is down, and that's sit back probably about as far as this will once it's demoed. There's a vacant lot in between them. I realize what you're saying, they should be in harmony with the front line of the properties.
Yeah, cause I'm looking, and it looks like they're in line with one another in the photo as it stands with the building out front.
There was an add-on put on, and you are correct. If you take the add-on off, it is in line, but I do understand what you're saying, it would not line up with the only facility on that block.
Right. Okay, just sort of making a point here, that, that, I mean, it, I'm not sure that it wouldn't be an improvement to the structure, I'm just sort of fleshing out my understanding of what our restrictions are down there, and it looks to me like we could potentially be setting ourselves up for a little bit of a, kind of a strip mall thing, if you will, with a whole bunch of parking out in front of the structure, and the structure setback. Thank you.
Thank you, other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
No.
Mr. Nubielo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
No. The demolition is approved. Thank you very much. Let me move back up to item number seventeen, since we have a guest here for this one as well, resolution authorized change order number one for SWIFT plan.
Resolution authorizing change form order number one to the master service agreement between the City of Williamsport and Wood.
Thank you, can I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
Some move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Ms. Holiday, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good morning, or, good morning.
Good morning.
It's been a long day.
Been a long day already.
Good afternoon, council members and administration and mayor. Attached for the city council's review is a resolution approving change order number one to the master service agreement between the city and Wood, formerly AMEC, in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars. The city is required to submit the SWIFT plan, as you know, to the Army Corps. This resolution will allow Wood to complete the prioritization in a risk matrix for our SWIFT plan, and this was a, or this was recommended with, by Public Works as a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Katz, please.
This did come to Public Works and was, we did recommend it with a positive recommendation. This is an ongoing factor that's going on with what we have to do with the levy, so therefore, we knew these expenses were going to continuously come to us with this, and it's a necessary evil. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that was easy, resolution carries.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming.
Yes, thank you very much. Let me get this, where am I now? I believe that's the bulk of our guests, unless a department head tells me I'm wrong. So let me return back to the top of the agenda ordinance amending the administrative code in final reading. Mrs. Frank in short form, please.
An ordinance amending the administrative code of the codified ordinances providing for the specific areas of the city government, which will operate within the various departments.
Thank you, can I have a motion and a second for this ordinance in final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Hearing motion and a second, Ms. Page, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, council. This is the final reading of a ordinance amending the administrative code, and as advised by Councilman Henderson during the last council meeting, a revision was made to the language of each section heading to now read as is hereby read as follows. Other than that, no further changes were made since the first reading.
Thank you. Quick question, we, did we get, we got a new copy in our packets this time round?
Correct.
And I'm trying to remember where exactly we put it, but I didn't find it on, on my quick run-through. We added IT as an, through amendment and during the first reading, correct? Do I remember that right?
Yes.
And so, well, the one that we have in front of us is not as important as what it actually passed on first reading. I just wanted to remind everybody that that, that is the case and make sure that it gets in, the one, assuming it passes tonight on final reading. If I remember, well, I don't remember what section we put it under, but I'm sure Mrs. Frank can help us straighten that out. But that was another change that I didn't see in the new copy that I got in my packet. Are there other comments or question? And, Mr. Lubin, I'm assuming that that's the one that carries, not the one in front of us anyway. Right, thank you. Are there other comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Anderson.
Just a question about the authorities here, and under, you know, after thinking more about this and talking with some others, I'm wondering, should we, should we put the parking authority and the redevelopment authority? I guess maybe the bigger question is, what is the relationship between authorities and the city government proper? You know, how do we, how do we put that together?
I'll defer to solicitor.
With the parking authority, we have a contractual relationship with that. That's why they're listed under the River Valley Transit. They have a, they have contracts with the parking authority to do administrative work for them.
Could you clarify that, because, you know, of course we have contracts with lots of people?
We do.
That could be, could be changed, they could contract with somebody else to manage.
Yeah, but it's more of a management-type contract.
Right.
It's just to show that where the parking authority would fit in with that, but also they also enforce the city parking ordinance on top of everything else.
But they do that independently, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
And also with the redevelopment authority, they do work, they're primarily the city's agent for community development projects, because there's certain projects that a city cannot do, and that's why the redevelopment authority does do them on behalf of the city.
Correct, so.
So that's why they're listed, it's more convenient than anything else, that if somebody's looking at it and goes, well, who, you know, who do we deal with from redevelopment? Or which city department do we deal with? And it's really designed more for outside people.
I think I understand the practicalities of that.
It's more of a practicality.
Right. My, my question is, should we, it almost, it almost appears then that there is a, a legal oversight built in here that the city has over authorities, which I, I.
We don't have legal oversight over them.
Exactly. So that, I'm wondering if we shouldn't have any.
It's a carrier really from where it didn't carry in the past.
Right, right.
More than anything else, but the parking authority obviously is a separate legal entity.
Yeah.
They're not part of city government. Redevelopment is a separate legal entity.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't recommend any change in, in the coordination that we have, but perhaps, you know, looking at this here for future generations and for our own protection and the protection of these authorities, I'm, I'm wondering if maybe we should remove them from this ordinance, not that it would change anything how we work practically, but just to make it clear that they are independent of the city, and that we don't have oversight over those authorities. I think that's probably important for us to do.
The only reason in this version that it was carried is because they had been in the prior, or the current city ordinance.
Yeah.
And it was more moving the different divisions around as opposed to creating new relationships. You know, whether it's in or out.
Would it matter if it's out?
It matters one way or the other.
Okay, then I would make a proposal to amend this.
Before you do that, can I ask your thoughts on how that would apply related to the Hiawatha? Just, cause that will shape how you, how you might phrase your proposal.
And that would bring another discussion, I guess, as to the relationship between the Hiawatha and, and the city. Can someone speak to that issue for us?
Mr. Nichols.
In nineteen ninety-four, resolution was adopted by council establishing the relationship of the city and the Hiawatha in terms of us managing that, so there is something on record that when it, when, when it was newly incorporated or reincorporated under Hiawatha and it established that relationship.
As a contract service, essentially.
As our responsibility in terms of managing it.
But, for example, you manage, I mean, different departments have relationships with different entities. In this case, it's, it's managing the Hiawatha, which otherwise is a five oh one C three, in, in some cases, it's managing the parking authority, which, but some cases, it's the engineering folks working with, wait a minute, Woods? Is that the right, Wood, the right, I almost said AMEC, and then, you know, I would have been wrong. Right, so we have contracts with all kinds of people, and so the question is, does it rise to the level, I think, Mr. Henderson's question, does it rise to the level to be part of an ordinance? For cleaning it up, it doesn't change anything about what we do.
I understand that, but what is different is that by resolution that was established, bylaws, the board, what have you, I mean, I don't, I'm just giving you a little history that there is a resolution on record.
Because it's, is, is there a reference to the Hiawatha anywhere else in the ordinance?
In which ordinance?
In the city ordinance.
No.
There is a kind of governing structure for the two authorities, and, and when Mr. Anderson brought this to me earlier, I didn't have the answer, but I thought, okay, well, what is different between the two authorities and whether it should be in this ordinance versus, in Hiawatha, versus, well, why not say that zoning and codes underneath that is planning commission? Or under, recreation is recreation commission, because clearly that's, that's the part of the city sub-departments that have a relationship with these either autonomous or semi-autonomous or volunteer boards, authorities, et cetera. And so I'm just trying to, again, for cleanliness, think about.
Again, I, I think you should defer to the solicitor, again, the administrative code provides guidance in terms of how the administration should be set up. Now, whether, depends how specific you want to get in terms of that organization of the city, but nowhere else do you have anything that references an organizational chart or anything, so how, you know, just for guidance, and I don't think the ordinance mandates certain things, but does give you guidance in terms of continuity in terms of administration organizational, cause you've talked about that, but that's the only reference where you have any kind of an organizational chart.
That's a good point. Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, my, my interest is, is protecting the autonomy of, of the authorities, and now that you mentioned it, the Hiawatha, although it's not quite.
Yeah.
The same level. But I, I think that would be in our interest to protect that autonomy. Again, it wouldn't change how we, how we actually do things, but, but perhaps it would clarify that, no, we really don't have any legal authority to oversee the parking authority, or to oversee any, any other authority for that matter.
I think just, again, defer to the solicitor, what does it mean to have that reference in administrative code? Is it more or less a guidance in terms of how things are operating, or, or is it more like a mandate like you're suggesting? I don't know. I always liken it just sort of as an organizational chart guidance to, as a reference point, nothing, not a mandate, but I don't know, I defer to the solicitor on that one.
Really doesn't matter one way or the other.
Right.
It's not going to change the relationships, it's not going to change the legal effect, it's not going to reduce the independence of the parking authority or redevelopment authority, whether they're listed there or not, because they're also listed, I think, in the section where all the different authorities are actually created under our codified ordinances. But it's not going to affect their legal standing one way or the other. It's like, it's just been really convenient so that someone looking at the books would know where they fit in, you know, the structure of city government, but they're not, you know, they're obviously independent of city government.
With that concept in mind, why not go further then?
Yeah, right, I mean, so what's the point?
Why not list all the authorities?
I guess I'm wondering, if, if an ordinance doesn't, it's not really an ordinance, you know, then what is it?
It is an ordinance, but it's really for guidance.
Yeah, I do understand.
But, but if we're going to provide guidance on where is the liaison between city government departments and external entities, why not have all of the external entities, including commissions and boards included on here so that, you know, we know that, you know, recreation, I mean, some of them are straightforward. I mean, some of them are straightforward, like Recreation and Recreation. Some of them, you know, do we have zoning always reporting to the zoning officer? Probably, yeah. What about planning? Does that always, is that always with zoning and codes? Or might that, now that we have a planning office, have the Planning Commission work with our planning officer?
Probably both.
That's a decision to make, not just, we've always done it this kind of way.
Some depends on the role that they're in, the Planning Commission. If they're doing zoning matters, it would be with the zoning officer.
Of course, right, right.
If they're doing outright planning, it would be.
But, but I use that more broadly as an example of, we seem to be, they're doing, we do, showing this guidance in some cases, but not in all the cases we could.
What, what I'm wondering is, from my perspective, you know, just looking at it, to me, it just looks like the, the Parking Authority is under the direction of the administration. I mean, that's what it just looks like to me. And so I guess it maybe just depends on who it is looking at it. But if it could look that way to me, then, then I suppose it could look that way to others. And I think it just might be, be better to record it legally as, no, we're not, we're not overseeing them. They are autonomous, as they ought to be. And however you coordinate, you know, within the administration, I don't think it really matters. This is, this is just housekeeping what we're doing here. But, but I think it's important that since we're recording it as an ordinance, we do it accurately and as accurately as possible. And in my way of thinking, that would, that would demand that we remove those authorities at the very least.
That in the form of a motion?
That is a motion.
Including the Hiawatha at the same time, or all three?
The motion would be to remove, well, yeah, we could remove Contract Services, Parking Authority, Hiawatha, under number five there. And then also remove the Redevelopment Authority under Section 140.01. That would be number five there.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Very motion and a second. Comments or questions on the motion to amend? Ms. Mealy?
Just to ask for my information, what's the difference between the relationship of RBT with the Hiawatha versus the relationship of RBT with the Transportation Museum?
What's the difference?
Yeah.
Well, the Hiawatha Inc. is a separate entity in terms of it's incorporated as a 501(c)(3). The museum is a, just a department or a subsection of RBT's responsibilities. It's a part of RBT.
Okay, so the museum doesn't operate in any way as a 501(c)(3) or?
No.
Okay. Just, I, I know that we see the budget for one and not for the other, but I was, I guess I'm then thinking about that organizational element as well and whether we might be better off to make that a 501(c)(3) too.
Yeah, well.
But.
Again, back when this was for, the administrative code was revised, it was an attempt to answer the question, we don't have an organizational chart. You know, and really, the only opportunity back then was, well, the administrative code is supposed to represent, I mean, again, you know, how the city operates. Not really specifically say just mandates, but how it operates. And I think we're going backwards again, you know, where it's all, you know, no one knows, there's no reference point to anybody. And that's where the question came up in terms of being consistent in how we operate now in the administrative code, so.
And I agree with that concept, but I think we could go further in the other direction if we wanted to with more detail. But in the kind of middle ground we're in, it doesn't make, to me, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense that Contract Services is part of the administrative code, right? It's a contract that you have with two entities that are otherwise independent in the same way that you have a contract with Endless Mountains, right? That's not here. And it could be if we saw, followed the same principle. I mean, would you suggest adding Endless Mountains to this?
Sure. No.
I mean, I'm open to it because just consistency is what I'm, I'm interested in. So after we have this discussion, then we can have that discussion. I think Mr. Allison is, Mr. Slaughter.
Norm, excuse me, are these authorities under the same state act as the Water Authority?
Parking Authority is under a separate act.
That's a separate act.
Redevelopment Authority would be under a separate act. Water and Sewer, Water and Sanitary are under the Municipal Authorities Act. But there is a Redevelopment Authorities Act.
Is that a federal act?
Pardon?
Is that federal?
State. These are all state statutes.
So they're separate.
There's a state statute for Parking Authorities. There's a separate one for municipal authorities, which include sanitary and water. And then there's a separate one for the Redevelopment Authorities. And then there's, we don't have a Housing Authority anymore, but there's a separate, obviously, state statute for that.
It just occurs to me that the Water and Sewer Authority are a lot more independent and autonomous than these two. Because if I recall during the Coles Project, the Parking Authority was involved in that, but the board was removed at one point?
And that's, I think, the point that could be made is that they are under the control of the city because the mayor controls those appointments. And if he wants to remove those and change them, I mean.
When push comes to shove, if the administration decides they don't, they're not independent anymore, they can be removed. Not that I'm recommending that's done, but it has been done in recent past, so.
And another part of the equation I could see here is, you know, if, if it is done this way, then the Parking Authority, the way it currently is, the Parking Authority, the liaison between city government and the Parking Authority is via WBT. If it is not here, then it would be up to the mayor to choose, is it under a relationship between WBT? Or maybe Parking Authority and, and Adam and Streets and Park, or Public Works would be the department that they would work with.
That's correct.
So, you know, it'd give more discretion to the mayor is another layer to think about in all of this.
May I?
Absolutely, Ms. Mealy.
Please, tomorrow.
Personally, I think in regards to the Parking Authority, it should remain where it is because of what you said about the history. If that move wouldn't have been made, you wouldn't have had Coles. Those Parking Authority members wouldn't have been removed and we had other individuals replacing them because there was an issue that we needed a vote to move forward. So personally, I think it should stay under there. So there is that organizational chart, so everybody knows who's ever the mayor at that point in the future has that ability. And that is a very crucial ability.
But that, but the authority that you're just talking about wouldn't change on this at all. You would have that authority because of how the authority is established.
Yes.
Not because of how it's organized. The organization here, the only reason there's a relationship between WBT and the Parking Authority is because of a contract.
Because of the contract.
Right? Not because of the Parking Authority.
The Parking Authority law.
Law. And not because of the part of our codified ordinances that give you the board authority to appoint and, and with advice and consent of council and also then remove. Which of, of course, you know, different, different bodies have different versions of that. We have some information, we learned just this week in our packet about the Brandon Park Commission, in which I think many of us didn't realize how the Brandon Park Commission worked in terms of our ability to remove members of that commission if we were to so choose. You know, different laws have different setups for how all of this works.
So I, I think, and that makes my point that it, it seems like it would be cleaner if, if we didn't have them in there. But it really isn't going to protect any independence or, because the, the power to influence them is still there.
Just to respond, which is true for any authority, Water Authority as well. You know, I mean, the fact is, authorities derive their authority from us.
Right.
Or state law.
Correct, but through us.
Right.
Through us. And so every authority is that way. I mean, that's just a fact. So if, if we ran into issues with the Water Authority, same thing could be done. You know, reappointments to the board and, and whatever. Okay, so it's, it is, and I, I agree. I mean, they're not totally independent, but in order to function as they do, they need to be saw as, as independent. I mean, it sort of needs to have a degree of independence. But yeah, I, I agree. I understand that.
The city doesn't have any legal authority over the Hiawatha, right, either?
Through a point, well, it's a, it's a board that has three different entities that appoint members to the board. So technically, no, you don't have direct.
They could, there's probably an out provision in the resolution that you were talking about, which was a contract that said it'll be managed by the city.
Well, the bylaws say that if the Hiawatha is, you know, abandoned or whatever, then all assets go to the foundation.
And the bylaws probably also say that, hey, it's going to be managed by the city, but they could change their own bylaws without our ability to.
That's correct.
To stop that. So that answers your question.
So we do have legal authority on, not, not through the bylaws, not, I mean.
It's their bylaws that they change.
So they can change without our, so it doesn't really need to be there either then? The Hiawatha doesn't either then? I mean, so I guess I'm just agreeing with the conversation that has taken place is that if we're not listing everything, then what's the point? We're not going to be able to do anything anyway. And it's understood how the authorities work. So I don't think it really, I'm just in agreement, I guess.
Come on back. Ms. Mealy?
It also seems like it might not be a mistake for us to maintain a document that does list off all these relationships. It isn't necessarily in the form of an ordinance. That is to say that I think we should codify major departmental relations within, within ordinance form. But that doesn't mean that we can't also have basically a list of our boards, our commissions, our authorities and the ways in which they interact with, you know, that it's not an ordinance form.
That would include, I mean, basically just a policy of the administration that's shared publicly, including with council, that would say, all right, if you want to, if you want to know how the city interacts with a board, a commission, authority, then this is the plan. River Valley Transit deals with Hiawatha, deals with the Parking Authority. Zoning and Codes deal with Planning Commission and, and Zoning Hearing Board. Recreation Department deals with Recreation, you know, kind of, this is the top level. This is the three branches of government and the cabinet. We know the three branch, two of the three branches of government that we have in the city. This ordinance applies to the cabinet-level stuff. But underneath the cabinet level, then, there are specific tasks and duties that then would be under the auspices by policy, if not ordinance, of each, you know, of the various departments or sub-departments.
The simple thing is, you want that ordinance to memorialize historically what, you know, what has happened in the past. If you look at the ordinance, it always gives you dates when things are changed and you can look back. To me, it's just a reference point if you want that memorialized in the administrative code. If you don't, you can find the information elsewhere.
Other comments or questions? Mrs. Frank on the motion to amend.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the, the ordinance in final reading is amended.
Thank you.
Now back to the ordinance in final reading as amended, and don't forget the amendment from last time. Other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Simply an observation that actually Mr. Henderson's suggestion for an amendment from last time related to the phrase hereby amended to read was, was not meant to apply to the language of Section 1, Section 2, and Section 3. Was rather meant to apply to the language in Section 3, Subsection A. Consequently, I think perhaps we need to do some sort of amendment to undo the amendment as interpreted and redo it properly.
I'm going to defer to the solicitor, but make the suggestion that the, the record is probably fairly clear and that maybe we consider the version that in front of us that has that error and the error about IT essentially to not be.
The correct version?
Typos are relevant to what we're actually voting for, as long as we all know what we're actually voting on. Which is to say, the original ordinance as submitted with the changes where we would say under Subsection A's is hereby amended to read as follows, as well as adding the Information Technology Amendment and now the Third Amendment related to removing Contract Services, Parking Authority, Hiawatha, and Redevelopment Authority from the list. I, I don't think we need to amend again. I just think we have a, an, an added IT, have a, a version that's not quite correct in front of us. But I think we know what we passed two weeks ago. We know how we've amended it tonight. And I just, when, assuming this passes then tonight, I think the mayor and I will just need to make sure that we read through and make sure all the corrections are correct before signing the, the final copy. Because I'm pretty sure the record is correct. Mr. Lubin, does that make sense to you? Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Frank on the ordinance as amended in first reading, now in final reading, also amended this evening.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance carries a final reading with some close attention being to be paid on, on the one that actually gets signed. That brings us to number eight on the agenda. If I'm keeping up with this correctly, ordinance amending Article 117. Mrs. Frank in short form, please.
An ordinance amending Article 117, general fee schedule.
Excuse me, thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the ordinance in first reading?
Go move. Second.
Very motion and a second. Mr. Jordy, welcome back.
Just want to make sure I didn't get my, didn't get eliminated today. I'm still employed by the city. Am I correct?
Oh, no!
Well, good evening again, President Williamson and members of council. What I have before you is a.
Oh, let me just clarify.
That's right.
You now answer to Janice.
Okay. Do we have to have a motion in a second first before I go into it?
I think I did.
You did?
Did I ask for a motion in a second?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought I did. Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
What you have before you is an ordinance amending Article 117, which is the general fee schedule. We do this from time to time. What I have given you is a copy of the changes. The changes I made, you'll have in yellow. Janice has the original, which will be the one that will be documented. Okay, but I felt it was just easier to show you the little highlights where we're changing. I can go through the changes and then, if you have any questions, I may be more than happy to do. This did go through Finance. There's a couple of changes I made. Changes would be under Section A, number one. It went from anything over $10,000 and additional fee of $13, which was originally $12. Down below, number two, Department of Labor and Industry has Act 45, which is the state law which adopt all the codes. In that, they require every time we issue a building permit, we charge $4. They do from time to time change that fee. We always had the number in here, the dollar amount. I felt it was better just to, when they change it, it automatically gets changed. Because if we don't, we have to wait until we do it and then we're getting charged $4.50 instead of $4. We can only charge the client $4. It kind of makes it tough. So that's the reason why, when they change it, we'll change it.
Makes sense.
On the second page, under B for contractor licensing fees, I changed Master Plumbers, went, I believe, from 90 to 100, or 80 to 100, and Journeyman went from 50 to 60. As we go through these, we did find some that were dropped by some reason we're not in, should have been in, some that we deleted, some that we added. Subdivisions. Subdivisions, we charge, now we're charging $250 plus $50 per lot, that's a standard across the different areas we have here. We never had a fee in there on that before. We're raising the liquor transfer license plus legal adds to $250 from $200, because they tend to run a little, when we run the legal add and the work we have to do, it's only 200, so we decided to go to 250, to try to recoup some of our expenses. On the next sheet, you come down, we have banner permits, $15. We do have a banner section in the ordinance, which we have been looking through. It is a requirement by the ordinance that says if you have a banner up front of your place, you're required to come in and apply for a permit. And you're allowed to keep that banner up for 30 days, and that permit is only, and there is a fee assessed to it, but we've never had a fee really assessed in our category, so we added one for $15. Mr. Nar is going to have to be the one tracking these. I own a business, I come in today for a permit, it's for 30 days. Mr. Allison comes in a week from now, it's 30 days. You follow what I'm saying, you eventually have got a lot of banners and a lot of tracking in the city. There were several complaints about some of the banners in the city, so we decided to research, and so now we're going to be enforcing that. And of course, everyone's heard about the sidewalks and what we're trying to achieve here in the city, doing it in the multi-year phase as far as different sections of the city. Talked to the administration, the mayor, and we felt to try to alleviate some of the burden to the property owner, we decided that we'd like to see that fee go from $30 to $0 for a seven-year period of time. During that time that we're going through this, once we get past that, all the sidewalks are fixed, we reestablish a fee. That was our suggestion. Again, council can do, if they want to or not, they can keep the fee. Street cut with a one-day closure, we changed. This is more pertaining to the utility companies, because what you're finding out is they come in, they'll cut a hole in the street. They notify us, they're in and out in a day, cut it, fix it, fill it, patch it, then they come back in later to fix it. Our notification is by phone or email, as long as we know that's all we're doing. We used to be a $75 fee in that, we felt that was kind of unfair to the gas and the water authorities and so forth, because all we're doing is communicating by email. Now, if it's a project, a little bit different, because they're working on multiple streets, multiple closures, multiple, I mean, they're moving around a lot, there's a lot of different stuff that goes on with that. So we're going to keep the same schedule, but if it's a one-day cut, then it's only $100, and that's all it's, all it is, is just a cut fee, instead of having that and a $75 closure fee. And then the last two, under E, other licenses, there's a peddler or solicitor's license. We raised it from $10 to $30. We do actually have an ordinance that covers that. I'd be sending that to the solicitors, because they need to review it a little bit to see who really should be administering it, whether it's finances, it's the codes department, and so forth. And also, we want to make sure, when you're soliciting and peddling, I mean, that could be anybody, it could be a church organization, it could be Girl Scouts, it could be Boy Scouts, we want to know from them who we need to charge this to and who we don't charge it to, okay? But there is, the fee was only ever $10, and that covers a background check. It doesn't cover the paperwork or anything that goes through if we have to go out to investigate someone out there. So that's the reason why we're bumping it from $10 to $30. And the only other one that was, that we added here that was not on this list was when you get down to student residence, rooming houses, sobriety houses, there's a fee of $60 plus $15 for each room. Well, we also have something out there called shelters, which we have to inspect. This year, when the winter was very bad, we had three shelters just open up, out of nowhere, which are having people come in, which are allotted from the churches, which is good, allowing people to come out of the weather to sleep in their rectory. Well, our job is to make sure that rectory is safe, make sure the emergency lighting, fire extinguishers, smoke alarms work. They have adequate restroom facilities, they have adequate places for these people to sleep, okay? So, we feel it's very similar to a sobriety house or a rooming house. Basically, they're sharing all the common restrooms, they're sharing the kitchen, they have all sleeping quarters in a larger area. So it's very similar to a rooming house. So we are basing it off of that we should have the same thing as what we have for rooming houses and sobriety houses. It should be a $500 cap, $60 plus $15 for each room. And you'll find out the difference in that is their rooms are one large room. I may have a room like this that has dividers up, and I have a family sleeping here, a family sleeping, this is one room. They're only going to be charged at $65 and 15, they're not going to be charged for each person in that facility, okay? So, that's one of the things we brought up. It did go through finance, we did talk about it a little bit, and I think it did, not this particular one, we were going to talk about shelters, but other than that, it did come through, I believe, with a positive recommendation to city, to full body of council.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy?
Yes, finance did forward this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. And we generally agreed, I believe, with the idea of lowering the sidewalk permit fee, since it is, having just gotten a quote from my sidewalk, a pretty ordinary cost regardless of $30, just kind of an insult to injury sort of thing if you're being forced to redo your sidewalk. And we discussed the shelter concept and didn't arrive at a firm idea of whether or not the full charge was a fair charge, or whether it should perhaps be something slightly different depending on, because it is obviously a slightly different undertaking to offer temporary cover for a couple of weeks during a cold spell to having a rooming house all year long. But, but we didn't arrive at any resolution. My understanding is, Mr. Gerardi, that you will need us to make an amendment to add shelter to-
Yes, if you, if you would think that would be correct, you would have to make amendment to that.
Right, to the ordinance, period. So, so we can open up the discussion of what folks think is a fair rate, I suppose. I do have one question, actually, Mr. Gerardi, in addition to finance's review, which is if master plumber was at $80 and all these other sewage contractor, plumbing contractor, et cetera, et cetera, are at $80, why only raise master plumber, why not raise all of the-
What I try to do is, when I bring this before, I try to do it yearly, or at least every other year. Those are ones that we have changed over the last couple of years, and these are ones that we didn't, and I'm just trying to update them to their all. And then, talking with Mr. Nichols, and I will be getting hold of Mr. Pavlik, what we think we'll do next year is come through with a, how do, how do we classify that bill as like a cost of increase, raise in your fees? Because basically, why we're raising these fees is because everything gets expensive, where every year it goes up. So instead of doing it like this and just picking and choosing, maybe doing an overall review, okay? Each year, we raise fees by a certain percentage to keep up with the cost of living. And we felt that would be pretty good, and it automatically changes, and you won't see me doing this unless we add one or delete one. So that's what we're going to try to work on this year, and we'll get back to everybody come next January.
Yeah, I thought is, everything is indexed, you know, there's a lot of things that are indexed, so maybe build into 2%, you know, default increase in fees, unless council decides to defer it, you know? So you're not having to worry about it all the time, and like I said, there's a process already set in place that tries to keep, you know, pace with inflation.
Certainly make it substantially less work to do, to do things that way than to have to come back and go through the whole overhaul and reprint everything and yada, yada. Yeah, it's simply, we'll rely on you guys to do the due diligence on that and see whether or not it's going to work out to be a wise idea, and see what they do in other communities. That said, as I said, finance forwarded this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions, Mr. Allison?
The shelters, which we did, we briefly talked, because we had had a longer conversation on the sidewalks at that point, and, and the peddlers and-
Right.
That license, which by the way includes door-to-door solicitation of signatures for your filing, if you're running for an office, so.
Is that legal?
Just in case.
I don't know, so those are some things we have to discuss, but, and we realized that was a discussion by itself, shelters, because when you compare the other ones, there is the ability, they're more of a business, and just the concept of the shelter being a nonprofit who is opening their doors to those who are really, really less fortunate. I think there's a real question whether that's not, we still have to inspect it, but that may be a service that, I don't think there's a lot of those, are there?
No, there's not, and they usually open up in the wintertime, when it's an emergency type of situation where it's cold. You're talking to your churches and stuff like that.
Yeah.
There are some, though, which I'd rather not give out the individual's name, but there's a rather large one in this city that has changed its classification from rooming house to shelter.
Okay.
Okay, and it is not a shelter, it is a rooming house. And then we actually went to court, I think, Mr. Lubin, remember? And I think we have to actually, what we did was decide, okay, fine, we're going to come back through and we'll classify it as this instead. And they house probably 80 people a year, constantly, every, every day. And they're getting federal funds, they're getting money from someone to house these individuals. So if I got to go over to inspect it to make sure the sprinkler system works in this facility, it's a rather six, seven-story building that we have to check out. So I think we should be getting something recouped for our cost of going through that building. Now, again, what you're saying is churches, yeah, that's part of the function of the church, I always thought, growing up, that the church is supposed to go out and help people who are less fortunate, bring them in, have that. If it's something that you felt that a shelter is classified as what I'm saying, other than some type of religious organization or something of that, maybe that's the way you go about doing that. I'm worried about the ones out there that are just, you're playing a name game.
Right, yeah.
That's what they're doing, they're playing a name game.
If they can take advantage of that, we have to protect.
It's like, I don't want to put an emergency access window in a room, so I call it a bonus room, I don't call it a bedroom.
Right.
It's no bedroom, but I can't, because it's worded as a bonus room, I can't make them put the window in.
Yeah.
So it's a matter of how you play the word game.
So, the unscrupulous will always find a way to piggyback on top of the ones who are trying to, to really help people. So, you know, I have real, I just, I'm not sure what that should be. I think at least it should be a nominal fee, because just because of the nature of the service that's being provided. Just my thought.
Question about that, if you would, for a second. Do we have a, somewhere in the ordinance is a definition of what a shelter is?
No.
So, one thing we could do is define a shelter.
Correct.
And we could define a shelter as something that is not open year-round.
Correct.
I'm assuming, and that would pass legal muster.
Yeah, we would, we could write something up and let the attorneys review it to make sure it fits what we're looking for. Because I believe I understand what you're looking for as far as charging, what you're not wanting to charge for, and what you do want to charge.
And then we could, if, I assume we do have a definition of rooming house and the others.
Right.
And so, if, if we clear, if we add a definition of what a shelter is, that would, that more or less defined it as something not year-round.
Correct.
And then make sure that our rooming house definition clarifies that that's, anything that would be a shelter that, but that is open year-round is a rooming house.
Right.
That would help solve that problem. And then we could come back and add a fee for the specific shelters that met those.
Right.
And, and one suggestion that I would have, and I don't have the exact dollar amounts, but it could be a nominal flat fee to cover expenses, but to then deal with scale, the size issue. In that case, since it's one room, it could be plus X dollars per bed.
Right.
Because if you had a dormitory-style bed, you know, you had a bunch of, what do you call them, bunk beds or whatever, in that, you know, it's one thing to say, hey, I've got four of those, and it's another thing to say, I've got 24 of those.
Right.
So, I don't know, given that we don't have that definition of what a shelter is yet, I don't know if we want to or don't want to make an amendment here tonight, or if we kind of wanted to wait till the next cycle.
We could wait till the next cycle, I mean, there's not a ton of them out there, I think it's something that does need to be addressed.
Yeah.
They usually, and the ones that you're talking about, Mr. Allison, usually start up in wintertime. Most of the time, we get church religions, churches and so forth that open their doors up, it's usually when it's below zero. People need places to go, the people who do live outside come in any place, that's the type of shelter you're talking about. And, you know, so I have no problems with waiting till the next cycle to do that, it's not a problem.
And so I could see, at that point, having a good definition, so we can say, this is a duck and that's not a duck. And then, at that point, we could, you know, the number might be $20 plus $5 a bed or something. And whatever makes sense for recouping costs, because that's all we're trying to do in this. Then that would be, we know which of the lines to apply to which of the facilities.
Just to be clear, I don't know the, the building you're talking about, or the organization, so I'm not suggesting that they're unscrupulous.
Correct.
I'm saying, others that are, could get a hold of this and, and take advantage of it.
Take advantage of the situation.
We need, do need to protect ourselves against it.
Sure. Mrs. Katz?
Mr. Gerardi, I just want to clarify something, because I got a few phone calls on the peddler's and solicitor's license. We have a lot of nonprofits that go to businesses, okay, to ask for donations from businesses. Not only nonprofits, we get a lot of the college students with fraternities, sororities coming in. Do they have to also apply?
Again, I'm going to refer to our attorney, and I think what we need to do is look at the peddler. Right now, at this point, we don't have anything associated other than $10 in an old ordinance. I wanted to raise the fee, because I know we do some background checks to some of these individuals, and it's going to cost us some money. I think $30 is a good, a good number for what we want to do. I think I have to go to our attorneys, though, and have them give me a list saying, these are people doing it, and these people do not need to do that.
And then based on that list, if we needed to revise it, because people were getting it included or excluded outside what we think is appropriate, we can always revise it so that the list would match up with our expectations.
Yep, and that would be an ordinance that probably comes back through for revisions, because it's outdated. And that's what we're working on now, on that one also.
Other comments or questions, Mr. Nubielo?
Joe, I want to go back to the sidewalks for just a moment.
Yes.
And one, I'm glad that we sort of eliminated the permit, it kind of relieved some of the angst from some people that have been dealing with this. But some questions have come to me, one of which I think we addressed before, but being that we have a viewing audience again. You do not have to have a licensed or permitted sort of individual to do your sidewalk. As an individual, I can do my own sidewalk.
That's correct.
So long as it meets the expectations and the codes.
Correct. What will happen is you, if you feel to do it, you'll come in, apply for the permit, you'll get a set of drawings and go along and say, this is the minimum you have to do. Was to show the four inches for the regular sidewalks, it shows you the six inches for, with mesh for your aprons going in for driveways. So everybody's doing it the same way, four-inch base, everybody has it the same way, but yes, you could do it, just like you could hire a contractor.
Okay, the other comments, and I've heard from several different people, are those who have slate sidewalks.
Yes.
Most of them, they claim the sidewalk itself is in good condition, although the individual slates might be uneven. Can they, are they just allowed to even those up, or do they have to replace them?
Nope, they're allowed to, actually, they're actually allowed to even up an existing five-by-five concrete sidewalk, if you wish to do it. They're not easy.
Yeah.
But, you know, the slates, exactly, they're allowed to level them, fix them, and there's no problem, reason, they can keep those.
That'll keep a lot of people I've been talking to happy.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
And, and those slates are pretty cool, and have lasted a lot longer than most of the concrete does. One thing I wanted to make sure we clarified, because you both said it slightly differently, and I don't want the public to be confused. I think you had said that they don't need a permit. I think you said that they didn't need, they did need a permit, but of course, no fee if this passes. It's clear they still need a permit.
Yes. Yeah, we're still going to require permits for everyone, because we still want to go out to look and make sure they're being put in properly, because last thing is, after I make everybody set in the City of Williams, upset in the City of Williams, where I don't have to go back through until you have to replace it again.
Yeah.
So we want to make sure it's done properly with everybody.
Right. The key is where we, if this passes in final reading, would be eliminating the fee to get that permit.
Right.
And it's important to just, I mean, we don't want to create confusion.
Right.
Mr. Henderson?
Just to answer the questions about the peddler's and solicitor's license, I did look up the code that, I sent an email to you earlier. And the code that we have now, let me just read one section of it. Says, persons who, without compensation or remuneration, solicit in behalf of or for any publicly recognized religious, educational, civic, or charitable organization are not required to obtain a license as provided herein. That's what it says.
Right.
So, so the newspaper was wrong, in that a religious, religious organization doesn't need to obtain a license to solicit.
Right. And again, that could have came from me, because I'm not going to, I won't put any on the mark. Because that, during our conversation, I believe I came out and said that, okay? And I was misquoted on, it was my bad interpretation on it.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, that's what the ordinance says, I mean, obviously, that affects me, you know, as a pastor. But, so I was, I wanted to nail that down. And that's where we are, that's where we stand. So whether, whether or not we keep it there, that's, we can deal with that later.
Thank you for the clarification. Ms. Mealy?
To that point, and I'm not as familiar with the wording of the ordinance, but it would be my suggestion that I think soliciting door-to-door in residential neighborhoods or at residences is a totally different animal from going to businesses. And so perhaps if we are looking at a revision of that ordinance, we should take that into account. That is to say, I own a business, my doors are open to anybody who chooses to come in. So there's not, you know, if- So there's not, you know, if someone wants to come in and solicit us, I, I view that differently than somebody knocking on my personal front door and, and asking me for something, um, at my home. You know, I think there's a different standard there.
I think you'll find out in the ordinance, they're required to carry a city license with them when they go through and get that permit. I think it's in that ordinance, where if I come in and I'm soliciting something, I'm gonna get a permit and I'll have a license, so I knock on your door. As a resident, you can say, do you have a s- a city permit to do solicitation? They can pull it out and show, at least they know the gentleman has been checked out through the city, and it's not somebody coming to stalk your house. At least that's what we're trying to achieve with this, this ordinance.
Sure. Other comments or questions on the ordinance in first reading? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance carries in first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item on the agenda is a resolution for real estate reduction. Ms. Frank?
Real estate reduction, Casey Stopper and Benjamin Stopper.
Do you want me to read the?
No, that's, uh, that's fine. Uh, can I have a, a motion in a second to approve the real estate reduction?
Oh, a second.
Here, a motion in a second, Mr. Grimes, how are you this evening?
I'm fighting a cold, so bear with me.
Oh, no. Hope you feel better soon.
I'll lysol this whole podium when I'm done.
Uh, fair warning to Ms. Reiner.
Um, this is a resolution for real estate reduction. This did go to finance, as it's a little unique in the dollar amount and the process that it went through.
Okay.
Um, so I just wanna highlight it a little bit here. Um, these are for two warehouses owned, uh, by the Stoppers, and the assessments have changed on both. The first went from one million nine hundred seventy-five thousand to one million two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. The other went from one million seven hundred fifty-nine thousand to one million eighty-one thousand. That's about a reduction of a million and a half in assessed values, um, which reduces our annual tax revenue by about twenty thousand dollars annually. Um, I highlight that not to say that it shouldn't have been done. I wanna be very clear that if Mr. Stoppers' properties are over-assessed by a million and a half dollars, they should be lowered, and we shouldn't be charging him twenty thousand dollars extra in taxes if that's truly what they are valued at. Um, one of the reasons why I really would like to highlight this is it, is it shines a, a light on the need for reassessment in our county that is long overdue. And the reason why it hurts us as a city is we have all of these people who have properties assessed too high, because, you know, over the last fourteen years, things change, and properties are assessed too high for a variety of reasons. And then those property owners have the right to come to the county assessment office and ask for an appeal for that assessment, and then they get their property values lowered. However, we have all these other people, because in the last fourteen years, things change, that their properties are under-assessed, and they're never brought up, because we never appeal an assessment that's too low. So what happens is every year, you know, administration and the mayor works very hard to add real estate value to the city, and then through a reduction like this, we lose a million and a half dollars in assessed value. If you guys work hard to add a million dollars, because, you know, we didn't bring anybody up, but dozens and dozens of people brought theirs down, and rightly so, there's a disparity there. And then we have to, you know, raise the taxes on everybody, because that assessed value keeps going down every year. Um, but the process that this went through is, um, Mr. Stopper did go to the county appeals board. Uh, they denied his request for reassessment, and they denied that because he did not have a formal appraisal done on these properties. Um, that, uh, was appealed to the court of common pleas. Um, and these numbers are not in order from the court. These are settlement numbers that happened between the parties involved, um, uh, just from a variety of circumstances. But I think they thought it was cheaper and, you know, a better outcome to just come to a settlement instead of let this go through the court process. And there is another large property in that same scenario right now within the city, so I just wanted to make you guys aware of how that works. And that's all that I really have to say. I just wanna let you guys know, because of the dollar amount and the process, you know, what was happening here.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Mealy, any comments from finance? Normally, this wouldn't go through, but that's, that's a substantial thing, uh, to consider the consequences of. And I, and I think talking a little bit more than we would about a, a real estate reduction in those circumstances makes sense.
Finance said, to put it bluntly, well, this sucks. Um, however, it's, it's an apt observation. We desperately need a reassessment, both in the city and in the county. Um, that said, it's not something that we can undertake, and in fact, um, it, it's only something that we can advocate for at the county level. Um, and Nick's right, that's sort of spot reassessing wouldn't work for us, and consequently, we're stuck with just watching our property values go lower and lower via, you know, those folks who can, who can see a savings, asking for reassessment. But of course, anyone who possesses a property that's now worth more than it assessed for would not probably do that by choice. Um, that said, uh, finance wasn't quite certain if we needed to recommend this one way or the other, um, but finance was not at liberty to recommend anything other than, um, a positive recommendation, because of the nature of the item. So we forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, and, and while council typically does not do kind of symbolic votes on things on a personal level, I will join our treasurer and a call to the county commissioners to complete, um, a, a reassessment process for the first time in fourteen years. I'll note that it was two thousand and four, the last time it's been done. Um, it's long overdue. It probably is something that should be done every seven to ten years, I think, by, uh, standards of, of most states in, in the nation, and, and hopefully, most counties in the Commonwealth. Um, we're long overdue and need to have this done as, as soon as possible. Um, that said, I think it's also, uh, something that, um, in the case of, of some of the properties of this particular owner, um, uh, values of their properties and the productive use could be, more vigorously pursued, and, and then we would also not see this particular problem emerge. So, um, I don't know how to say that in a polite way.
Understood.
Uh, other than that. Um, any comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Um, yes, uh, and, uh, real estate reduction is approved. Um, next item on the agenda is real estate exoneration. Um, Mrs. Frank, please.
Real estate exoneration, Thomas and Sandy Gilbert and Robert E. Henderson.
Can I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
Go move.
Second.
Here, a motion in a second.
Um, this one's one that we can feel a little bit better about, uh, lower dollar amounts. But these are two real estate exonerations for homeowners in the city who are a hundred percent disabled, uh, because of serving in a time of war or conflict. And, uh, as being indicated, as a hundred percent disabled from that service, they are, uh, allowed to have their properties exonerated a hundred percent for their taxes. Um, so this is just, you know, and they also meet a cer- certain income threshold. Um, so this is just exonerating those taxes for those two homeowners.
Thank you. Comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, uh, it, the only thing I would add is, is a thanks for their service to their country. Um, and clearly, you know, these things also have budgetary consequences for the city. Um, but as you said, um, we can feel proud as a community to, to thank them in this small way for their service. Hearing no further comments, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution, uh, also carries. Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Uh, next item on the agenda is resolution awarding the aggregate bids for the City of Williamsport. Mrs. Frank, in short form.
A resolution awarding the aggregate bids for the City of Williamsport.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
Go move.
Second.
Here, a motion in a second, Ms. Reiner, how are you this evening?
Not too bad. How about you?
Good.
Um, this one's a simple one. It's, uh, same as every year, we put the aggregates out the bid through West Branch Cog. They basically do all the legwork for us, um, give us the lowest bidders. It just requires your approval for us to use them.
Thank you, and this was reviewed by finance?
Uh, finance, yes, sorry.
Ms. Mealy?
Um, finance reviewed this and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Uh, not much to note, the prices are more or less in line with the same, with the pricing that we got last year. Um, and this is indeed just a, a resolution that we execute every year. Um, so.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, uh, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution carries. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2018 bucket truck. Uh, Mrs. Frank?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2018 bucket truck.
Uh, thank you. Uh, can I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution?
Go move. Second.
Here, a motion in a second.
The city currently owns a nineteen ninety-two GMC bucket truck. Um, at the beginning of this year, um, we were taking Christmas lights down. Poor Kenny Myers was, the last couple of days before his retirement, uh, the boom of the bucket truck caught on fire. It was repaired, but it requires specific testing, uh, dielectric tests every year, certain certifications. Um, not very many miles on the truck, but lots of hours. Um, and with what the city maintains for low-mount lighting, uh, street lighting, uh, traffic signals, it is a very huge asset to us. So we're requesting to purchase a 2018 Ford F-550 chassis with a Altek AT forty-G boom system. Um, this one is, will have slightly further reach than the current truck due to the street lighting we maintain on the spur of Route fifteen. Um, currently, when the electrician's in the bucket truck, he has to stand on a milk crate to be able to reach the lights. Um, not the safest scenario. Um, the current bucket truck is pretty much seen in its day. Um, we nurse it through for now, um, but hopefully, we'll get your approval to purchase a new one.
Thank you, and I believe this was reviewed by Public Works?
This came to Public Works, and we did pass this on to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. This is a mighty fine-looking truck, I'm gonna tell you. Um, the old truck, uh, is going to go on Minister Bid.
Yes.
And, uh, we're going to try and get some money out of this. Uh, as I, I, I asked Adam, I said, how can you do this, you know, put this on, uh, for a bid when there's so much wrong with it? And he said, there are a lot of farmers that'll go after something like this, which I think is great. You never even think of something like that. Um, but this is a truck that's really needed tremendously. And, um, I know they tried to repair it, and it just didn't work. Uh, it would not pass inspection, so this is a necessary vehicle to be purchased.
Thank you very-
Like I said, it did go for a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Um, any value in the milk crate? Any comments or questions?
Just for hauling milk.
Yeah. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, uh, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement for the purchase of a 2018 bucket truck.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
Go move.
Second.
Here, a motion in a second, Ms. Reiner?
This is a lease agreement for the bucket truck, utilizing Altek Capital Services. It would be a five-year lease. Um, payments would be twenty-two thou- twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars a year, um, starting this year and going through 2022. Um, the biggest reason for wanting the payments is, at this point, um, the goal is to stretch liquid fuels as far as we possibly can. You know, the, the more we can do with liquid fuels to update the depleting equipment we have, um, the less burden it is on the general fund. Um, unfortunately, it's about ten thousand dollars in interest over the five years. Um, but we're gonna get more bang for our buck, to say, stretching that money in liquid fuels. Um, this did go in front of finance with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy from finance?
Uh, finance did forward this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Um, it's obviously a bit of a balancing act. Um, we only have so much funding annually, I think around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that we can spend on equipment through the liquid fuel line item. Um, and a project like this would take up almost an entire year's worth of funding. Um, uh, that said, I think if we, um, if we do try to spread the cost out, first off, I should make the observation that by electing to pay, um, a lump sum annually, we are saving ourselves slightly over making any sort of monthly payment, not to mention the amount of work that it would be on our end. Um, but, uh, but, um, nonetheless, it is about a ten percent, you know, increase in the price for the, um, for the privilege, I suppose, of, of taking it over five years instead of taking it all at once. Um, we, I can't stress enough, as, as we've discussed across the board and every year, a budget time, but also, in the meantime, how essential it is that we start to look toward large expenditures that are coming towards us, and perhaps set aside money before we need to make the expenditure. Um, that said, uh, as, as Mr. Winder, um, had told us in finance, we have a number of item pieces of equipment in the Streets and Parks Department that have simply more or less exceeded their useful life, and we do need to work on replacing those over the next few years. Um, this is one of the bigger ticket items. If we can span this out over five years, we can purchase individual pieces, um, within one year out of liquid fuels. So this seems like the wisest item to use for the, um, long-term purchase, if you will, leasing arrangement.
Thank you. Uh, comments or questions? Mrs. Katz?
Just a sidebar here, just to, for people to understand how valuable this truck is. Correct me if I'm wrong. We have eight hundred and seventy-six low lights, we have eighty-eight traffic lights, we have two thousand eight hundred street lights, including fifteen on the spurs.
Correct.
So that's a lot of lights to take care of, and this is why this, this truck is so important.
Correct.
In addition to the Christmas lights.
And, didn't even forget.
Don't wanna forget those. Um, any other comments, Mr. Allison?
We used to, uh, council would, uh, compliment, uh, Mr. Wright every year about stretching the vehicles out, but knowing full well, it, it made the budget a little bit easier that year, but sooner or later, you have to pay the piper, and we're hitting that.
Yes.
So, uh, it's not, it's not a, an expenditure that we didn't know was coming, but things are tight, so, uh, we didn't do what maybe we should've done then, knowing that, uh, those things were gonna wear out, but.
I will point out that this bucket truck will, uh, last till 2044. If we, if we get the same record out of this one, but we got it out of the last one.
Let's hope so.
I'm hoping so.
Hopefully, the LED lights will last.
Exactly. Uh, other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution to authorizing the purchase of a 2017 roller. Mrs. Frank, please. I left it to you to pronounce that.
I know, I thought that, I thought, "Oh, good, you went first." Resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2017 Bowmag pavement roller.
Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution? Here a motion in a second.
Once again, we have an ancient piece of machinery. We have a 1988 Dynapack roller currently, LA200 model. Honestly, this roller owes the city nothing. It starts every year. It has rolled, just in the time I've been here, about 600,000 tons of blacktop. The issue now is that the parts are obsolete. It was slated last year to be, to be purchased of a new one. Unfortunately, something popped up that caused it to be put on the burner. So, this year, we definitely have to get a new one because I can't get parts to get this one actually physically able to roll. It will start and run, but, so, the money was put in the general fund line item, Streets Department General Fund Equipment Line Item, I'm sorry. The new roller is, oh, what was it, $32,036.40. On the resolution, it's put down to 2017. At the time when I got the quote, this was the best possible price I could get, was on a leftover 2017 model. I want to say it was Monday, the gentleman from Five Star Equipment called me and said, "How would you like to have a 2018 for the same price?" He says, "I got Bowmag. They want your business so bad, they'll give you a 2018 for the same price as leftover 2017." So, pending, there's no issue with you guys, we'll actually take a 2018 model instead of a 2017.
I make a motion to amend 2017 to 2018 in the resolution?
Thank you.
Here a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the amendment is approved. This was reviewed by Public Works. That was just to make that easy. Now we have to have the discussion. I just wanted to go fast on that one.
It was, it was passed with a positive recommendation. The one thing that he needed, why this roller was getting so bad, is it's going that way instead of going flat like this.
The center has a pivot point, and the pivot point is actually collapsing. So at some point, it's going to be sitting in the middle of the road with us trying to figure out how to pick it up.
So, it's, that's the need for this, okay? I didn't, first of all, I forgot, we forgot to mention that the other vehicle is under CoStar, so that was-
Yes, yes, everything is under CoStar.
This I forgot to ask, if, what are you going to do with this piece of equipment? This old, the old-
The old one will go on municipal bid also, and we'll list that this is the issues, and, I mean, trade-in value is $100. I'd rather take a chance on getting a little more.
Amazing, okay.
How much does it weigh?
I'm sorry?
How much does it weigh?
About four and a half ton.
You might get more out of it just in raw metal.
Be fun, you know, we could put it in the nature play area, it's something to play on. Any other comments or questions, Mr. Nubielo?
Just very quickly, this is a pretty integral part of the services that Parks and Parks provide. Certainly, we know we've got some streets that need some assistance here and there, and this is a device in combination with something that our Streets and Parks crew put together a year or so back that helps us with paving projects. This will be a manpower saver, certainly a time saver in the long run. So, I tend to think that this will recoup itself, you know, financially over a relatively short period of time with the kind of use we're going to put it to, so. Thanks, Adam, for getting us the good deal again.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy? Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution to authorize submission of flood mitigation grant. Mrs. Frank, please.
A resolution to authorize submission of a flood mitigation grant.
Can I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution?
No move.
Okay.
Here a motion in a second. Ms. Halliday and Mr. Fitzgerald, how are you this evening?
Good.
Good.
In front of the City Council is a resolution authorizing the submission of a 2018 flood mitigation grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, in the amount of, and not to exceed $500,000. As you know, the City of Williamsport is currently seeking funds related to design for flood control systems, specifically Graffitius Run. This grant requires a 15% cash match. The, the city has spent over 15% in match requirement, and these expended funds will be utilized for the match. Applications are required to be submitted no later than May 31st of this year, and the applications are to be reviewed by the DCED, determine eligibility. The submission of this application will be through our consultants, Penn Strategy, specifically Jason Fitzgerald, and this was reviewed by Finance with a positive recommendation.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy?
So, the, the funds that we have already expended-
I think it wasn't you. I think, so magic just occurred, and now it works.
I know, I can hear it. Sorry about that, everybody, if you couldn't hear me. Janice, when you tried to type this off the, off the tape, I apologize for not being able to hear me previously. So, the, the funds that we've already expended on Graffitius Run will certainly count as a match, correct?
Yeah, any funds that were spent related to flood mitigation would count towards a 15% cash match.
So, actually, it wouldn't even have to be within Graffitius Run, it could be more.
No.
Okay, so we've matched that in spades. All right. Good. And, well, I suppose a minor note that I just noticed when we were reading out the resolution, I don't think we would object at all if the amount that we received for the grant exceeded $500,000.
So, the maximum that you can receive under this program is 500,000. So, our, our request will be for $500,000. I assume we'll be able to come up with that much. And this will be considered by the Commonwealth Financing Authority at one of their regular meetings, possibly as soon as July 17th, but doubtful, based upon our monitoring of the Commonwealth Financing Authority and the fact that that's awfully close to budget time. These are sometimes used in, in budget negotiations. But most likely will be considered and hopefully approved the September 18th Commonwealth Financing Authority meeting. The Commonwealth Financing Authority, just for everybody's edification, is chaired by the Secretary of the Department of Community and Economic Development, who's visiting Williamsport soon. You've all been invited, and hopefully will be able to be there. And then there's one representative from the House Republican Caucus, one representative from the House Democratic Caucus, and then one representative from the Senate Republican and Senate Democratic Caucus. So, we will be visiting leadership in, in all four caucuses, and we have spoken with Secretary Davin about the potential for this application, and then as soon as we get it in, we will go from there.
Okay. Excellent. This grant funding, just to underline once again, is exclusively for design. That is to say that if we, if we do succeed in getting this grant and we do expend the funds, that will still leave us with the looming gap of how do we afford to actually do something to Graffitius Run? But at least we will know what needs to be done to Graffitius Run with this funding and if we, if we succeed in acquiring this grant funding.
Sorry, Madam Chairwoman, the, we could use it for construction, but I think that it's going to be, we'll use, we'll use all of this up for design, but we can, in future rounds, apply for construction. And there is some consideration at this point about expanding the flood mitigation program. There has been some dialogue about that. The governor's budget doesn't specifically do that, but there are conversations about that for future years. So, in the future rounds, we could potentially apply for the construction.
And I'm assuming that if they supported this initial application for design, then we would be likely to receive additional support for construction. But yeah, this flood mitigation thing seems to be an exceptionally expensive undertaking for the city. So, the, the majority of the discussion that we had with Ms. Halliday at Finance centered around the, sort of the deliverables from further design elements related to Graffitius Run, and I can discuss that a little bit. This, this, the extended design contract, in addition to what we've already spent with R2, would look at the entire watershed and also deal with, account for greater water runoff than what we're currently seeing. That is to say that in the same way that we've been tasked by the Army Corps and FEMA with making sure the levy is not just up to prior standards, but also up to future standards, this, this would sort of, would do some of the same things with Graffitius Run.
Wouldn't you say entire watershed, including into Loyal Sock?
Into the, yeah, oh, up into Loyal Sock and up into the, yeah, sorry, I thought you meant into the Loyal Sock Creek.
No, no, I'm sorry. It's sort of Loyal Sock town.
Really don't think it goes there.
But, but it, it deals with the root causes.
Right, precisely. It looks, it looks not just at Graffitius Run itself also, but at the, at the various and sundry creeks that run into Graffitius Run and create, right? And moves up into Loyal Sock, not just in the City of Williamsport. It would also, the, one of the deliverables, deliverables that we will be looking for if we secure the funding is a bid-ready document, an RFP-ready document, that we can put out in terms of, to acquire bids for the, for the project, and obviously accurate cost estimates, which would enable us to seek funding for dealing with Graffitius Run. All of which is to say that as, as we more or less envisioned when we started talking about Graffitius Run a couple of years ago, we probably are still a ways away from having a, a long-term solution to the problem there. That said, this is certainly a big step in the right direction. When, so a few things, when will the application be submitted?
The application will be submitted, we'll probably submit early, but it needs to be submitted by May 31st at the latest.
Okay, got it.
And Mrs. Halliday has been providing me with information to get me started on that.
Excellent, and so you'll be putting it together, Jason, but I'm assuming that there will be some review by someone here in the city as well before? Not, not by any stretch indicating that we don't trust you, Jason, but just that anything is going out for the city.
Yeah, before the application's submitted, we, probably the mayor and, and President Williamson would, would sign off on this as well as Mrs. Halliday. We won't have to come back to council until accepting the funds. So, if, if we're awarded the money by the Commonwealth Financing Authority, the next action would be, a contract would be sent to the City of Williamsport, and then obviously, since it's a contract, we'll have to come back in front of you. We essentially agree to the terms of the contract, which is that, you know, any construction-related work, which there isn't any in this application, would be prevailing wage and meet all of the typical requirements the city has to meet.
Got it. Yeah, so that was, sorry, Mr. Fitzgerald was not at our committee meeting, so we had a handful.
And I apologize for that. I wanted to get back, but was out of town.
No, that's just fine. Just, that, that's the reason why we're having some of this discussion here. And, Jason, I apologize, while you were talking, I thought of one further question, but I can't remember what it was. So, Finance forwarded this to the full body of council with positive recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Another thing, if I could, just to point out, this program is funded by Act 13, the Marcella Shale Legacy Fund, so I think that we have a pretty good claim to these dollars. So, and Senator Yall was very supportive of Act 13 and reminded him of that when, in our recent meeting, that it would be good to be able to get some of these dollars back here.
And I know one of the principles that was been followed in other state-controlled aspects of that funding was that the, the communities impacted by Marcella Shale development would receive priority in terms of funding of those state funds. So, you know, if we need to remind various state agencies that that was part of the commitment at the time, I'm sure we can delicately integrate that into the grant application. Other comments or questions, Mr. Allison?
This may be what Ms. Mealy was trying to remember, because he had a really good idea, if they could possibly look at, look to include some recreational aspects in the project.
It wasn't, but thank you very much for remembering that for me.
Well, it's so good, I wrote it. You know, as, since it is going to be a pretty expansive look at that whole area, it, it doesn't hurt to look at something not directly related to that, but maybe possible to include something in there, since we're dealing with a lot of water and that type of thing.
That was mentioned, yes, at the committee meeting, and that is something definitely through the design process that we can try to implement.
Other comments or questions?
All I was going to say was that, I think part of my suggestion there was that that might open up even further opportunities for, to find funding for the project, if we were looking not only at stormwater management and flood mitigation, but also at creating some sort of recreational asset to the city at the same time. And not to mention, it would be lovely to have a park that, you know, that was, ran along Graffitius Run or, or, you know.
And if you were to try to, to match up a, a recreational component, actually, the Commonwealth Financing Authority will be considering GTRP grants, which are Greenway Trails and Recreation Grants, and my cheat sheet for those is in the back, but I think that those are a June timeframe, but they're considered by the same group of folks. So, that may be a way to, to match those up. Now, there's a 15% match with Greenway Trails and Recreation, but again, oh, I'm sorry, actually, all the Commonwealth Financing Authority grants related to recreation, there is no match this year. They removed the match this year, so we don't have to worry about that.
Run with that idea, all involved. The one thought that I had on this is, is just in thinking through the conversations many of us have had for the neighborhood affected by Graffitius Run, I hope that there's an understanding of the pace here. You know, it's been a couple of years where we said, "All right, we need to make this a priority in resolving the long-term concerns." It took us a couple of years, as Ms. Mealy earlier referred to, to save up some money to initiate the initial engineering work that's now been completed, which put us in a position now to apply for grant funding for design, which will take a while to get, secure that funding, and then it'll take a while to actually do that work, which then will take a while to secure funding to actually implement the process. All of that, if, if it were me in that neighborhood, would be frustratingly slow. But if there's any solace, it's actually got momentum, and we're actually working on it and have been working towards a, a permanent solution. And if there's solace, it's, you know, a solution to a 50-year problem, or maybe a 100-year problem that that community has had to deal with. And so, i- if nothing else, we know we've got momentum, even if the momentum is painfully slow sometimes. So, thank you for all involved in, in trying to move the ball forward in this process. No other comments or questions, Mrs. Katz? Ms. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution to authorize submission of an Act 13 Legacy Fund Grant Application.
Resolution to authorize the submission of an Act 13 Legacy Fund Grant Application to Lehigh County of Pennsylvania.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
No move.
Second.
Here a motion in a second, Ms. Halliday.
Thank you. Yes, this resolution will authorize the submission of an Act 13 Legacy Fund Grant Application to Lehigh County in the amount of $20,000 for the Brandon Park Band Shell Rehabilitation. After a view of recommended improvements from the October 2017 City of Williamsport Parks and Inventory and Recommendations Report, the Brandon Park Band Shell was deemed in need of ADA modifications, structural repairs, and improvements to remove and prevent moisture damage. If awarded, the legacy funds will be utilized for the Brandon Park Band Shell improvements.
Thank you, and-
Oh, and this was reviewed by Finance with a positive recommendation, sorry for that.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
Yes, Finance did forward this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. This is kind of a drop in the bucket, even in terms of the expenditures that we'll need to find at the band shell, but it does, this, the money from the county would help us meet the match requirement on a grant that we applied for just a couple of weeks ago. And, and all told, if, if all the monies come due and they, and they should, or if all the monies come in that we've applied for, and they should all arrive at around the same time, that will enable us to, to rejuvenate the band shell so that it makes it through another 100 years with us, so.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mrs. Katz?
Just quickly, the Streets and Parks are really going to do a lot of work on the band shell, so that's going to save us a ton of money. So, we're really thankful that they can accomplish that, and want to thank them for that job also.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Halliday. Help me out, everyone. I believe that makes it, brings us to accept for filing, unless I've missed something?
I think you're right.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is then accept for filing. We have the Public Works Meeting Minutes of February 21st, 2018. Finance Meeting Minutes of January 16th, 2018. Controllers Report from February 2018, and Brandon Park Commission Meeting Minutes of February 20th, 2018. Can I have a motion and a second to accept these for filing?
Second.
Here a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nubielo?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson? Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those are accepted for filing. Next item on the agenda is announcements. Next regularly scheduled City Council Meeting Minute, meeting will be held on Thursday, April twenty-sixth, at seven-thirty here in Council Chambers. There will also be a Police Pension Board meeting immediately following this council meeting. Other upcoming meetings include Monday, April sixteenth, at noon is Planning Commission, at five-thirty P M is Government Study Commission. On Tuesday, April seventeenth, at ten A M is Blighted Property, three-thirty P M is E R C, and at six-thirty is Harb. On Wednesday, April eighteenth, at four P M is the Charter Commission Meeting. On Thursday, April nineteenth, at ten-thirty A M is Zoning Hearing Board. At four P M is the Board of Health. On Monday, April twenty-third, at ten A M is the Fire Pension Meeting. At four P M is Recreation. On Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, at one P M is the Finance Committee. On two, at two-thirty is Public Works Committee, and at three-thirty is Public Safety Committee. On Wednesday, April twenty-fifth, at eleven-thirty A M is the Redevelopment, Redevelopment Authority Meeting. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Are there any comments or by members of council? Mrs. Katz?
Yes, just to remind everybody that Richard James is trying to put together a cleanup in the city, and if anybody would like any information, you can go on social media. It is the week of April fifteenth through the twenty-second. Also, Newberry Partnership is doing a cleanup in Newberry, and as I understand, Ms. Mealy, you're doing a cleanup in your neighborhood also, and also is Joel Henderson in his neighborhood. So the, the whole city is trying to get cleaned up here, and let's all cooperate. I do have a question for Streets and Parks, it's already because people are smelling spring. When are we going to start picking up debris in the city?
April twenty-third.
April twenty-third.
It will last two weeks for the pickup. People can start putting their stuff out April sixteenth. We'll probably, I know the newspaper says one time through, we will attempt to make two, if not three trips through the city, just to be sure.
Okay, so people start putting it out on the sixteenth? Okay.
This weekend, so we can feel free to put it out. I don't think it's going to be there until the second.
Okey-dokey. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments from council? One comment I would have is to thank Mrs. Frank, who went through and very carefully reviewed our committee list for the various authorities, boards, commissions, and committees that we have in the city, and made sure that we had accurate listings of their membership and their terms. And so I'd ask all the appointing bodies, i.e. council and the mayor, to review the new updated list, and we can all work to get openings filled, reappointments completed for people's firms who are up and the intention is for them to stay on the board. We've got not a long list of them that exist right now, but we do have some openings and some people that need to be reappointed, and so now that we have an updated list, thanks to Mrs. Frank's work this week, we can try to get that up to date in short order. So thank you for doing that, Mrs. Frank. Oh, I believe it was more or less taken care of, but just for extra security, I can announce that we had a, an executive session after the end of our last council meeting on the purpose of negotiation and personnel. I believe were the purposes of that, so just to make sure that that, once, if not twice, gets read into the record. Thank you for the reminder. Are there comments by the mayor or the administration, or the treasurer?
Kat, since, you know, it's not a long enough meeting, and I can stroke it up here in the last round, I just want to make you guys aware, actually, I have an email I received tonight during the meeting, but as most of you know, here's a bill in the Senate that can considerably change our tax collections and where they are. I've been working very closely with Mr. Fitzgerald and the Pennsylvania Municipal League, and we've been working with Senator Brown's office, who's the sponsor and author of this bill. And I did receive an email tonight that he intends to make an amendment to his bill that'll probably be on Monday. He expects the bill to go for a vote on Tuesday for passage, and the verbal commitment is that that amendment would allow us to pass a local resolution to opt out of consolidation of business privilege and mercantile tax, so we would have the opportunity to have that where we would like. It also removes the line that bans contingent fee audits, which the city has found over a million dollars of legitimately owed tax revenue through. It gets rid of that ban, and it also moves the date out to January first, twenty-twenty, instead of January first, twenty-nineteen, so a lot of accomplishments to help the city there financially. And the only other thing that I would add to that is that Senator Brown has worked very well with us, you know, but it's still going to change some of our collections where if this would go through as it, as it's intended, it still has to go through the House and to the governor's desk, but our amusement taxes, which are currently collected in-house, would move over to the School District Tax Office, who collects our E I T, and our local service tax, which is currently collected by Burckheimer, would also move to the Williamsport School District Tax Office. Now, there's a lot of ifs there, like I said, this still has, the amendment has to happen, it has to be voted on in the Senate, and it has to go to the House, be voted on, and then to the governor's desk, but that's how it, it looks like it's going to shape out now, so I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
That's big news, given that you've kept us updated on that issue all along, to be able to make those as, at least this stage, as legislative wins, is, it should be applauded for the fine work that you and Mr. Fitzgerald have, have spearheaded, not only for our community, but really for all the communities across the Commonwealth that would have been affected by those changes. So thank you both for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Any other comments by the administration? Any comments by the general public? Mr. Miller, you know the drill.
Scott Miller, eight twenty-two Tucker Street. The last council meeting, I came, I mentioned about how I have a phone, can take pictures, and I can email it or message it to the Streets and Parks, and the mayor asked me to send a copy. I found out from the people in Streets and Parks, what app? Last year, we were supposed to have that app, but apparently it didn't, you know, stay around very long, and there isn't the manpower to operate a computer at Streets and Parks because they're down to minimal staffing. So, to be able to report the potholes, and I don't know what you call it, when the street's just crumbling away, I got a mirror cam, miracam.com, and it has a nice little chip that will record up to fourteen hours with sound. So mayor, in your email, you're going to start getting a whole bunch of videos, but going around the streets, I'm like, what street doesn't have a pothole? You know, so like, should I go around and report everything and add them to seven-hundred block and eight-hundred block of Tucker Street, nine-hundred block where they fixed around a manhole on Grove Street, and he's done at Maxwell and Almond? There's a pothole, I reported it last year.
Mr. Miller, just, just...
I just want to make sure.
Address the chair, please.
I report these things, I've given them to them in writing.
Yes, sir.
And now with that sidewalk thing, I'm going to make sure that I send a, make up a written one and send it certified return receipt and by first class, because if people have six to nine months to repair or hire a contractor to fix stuff, I would say that potholes and street repairs, storm drains, et cetera, should fall under the same guidelines. You got six to nine months to have them under contract, and that's something, I can take legal action, that's worth a hundred and thirty-four dollars, because I checked with Mr. Girardi, if it's not done, my sidewalk isn't fixed in proper time, there's a two-hundred dollar fine. I think I could use two-hundred bucks for every pothole that goes unfixed. You know, look at Army Lane, y'all had that on the list. Y'all know it's defective. It's one thing to not know there's a problem, but when you acknowledge here's the problem, refuse to take proper and appropriate care, as you want homeowners and property owners to do, I need a picture of y'all so I can put it in the dictionary under hypocrisy. Y'all have a wonderful evening, and don't forget Earth Day, April twenty-second.
Thank you. Other comments from the general public? Hearing none, motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second. All in favor? Thank you.